I have nine o'clock and I will call the February eighteenth, two thousand twenty-five Board of Commissioners Annual Retreat open. At this time, I do recognize that we have a quorum. Before we begin with the agenda, I would like to read an email that I received last night from Commissioner Alexon, and I have forwarded this email to each of the board members. And I will be reading this email verbatim. "Good evening. I will be taking a temporary leave of absence to attend to personal and family matters. During this time, I will be requesting an unpaid leave for the next eight weeks. Kind regards, Joycey Alexon." Members of the board, you have the agenda in front of you. Is there any adjustments or discussion of the agenda? Having hearing none, do I have a motion for approval? All right, we have a motion. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote by saying aye. Aye. Any oppose? The ayes have it. The agenda is approved. First item of business, Human Services Board Orientation, CCR Consulting.
Good morning.
Good morning.
Is this the clicker? Do you have your book on the time being?
Yeah.
You have something I need from the table.
Maybe I should grab my laptop. Do you want to set your laptop up?
Yeah.
Just set it right up here in case I need it. That's working?
Okay, perfect. Well, good morning to everyone. My name is Sheri Bradshaw, and we are, Henriella Nesbitt is with me, and she'll be supporting this morning, this presentation, along with myself. We're happy to be back with you to do the final phase of our programmatic review with you of the human services programs operated through the Department of Social Services. We hope you were able to look at the PowerPoint presentations and maybe even listen to my weak voice, scratchy voice oftentimes, for a couple of the programs that I reviewed with you. And today, our agenda with you is to go over those PowerPoint presentations at a very, very, very high level, recognizing that you have very important budget work to do for the remainder of your day. And just to hit on a couple of things in the Child Welfare presentation that really do intersect with your role as a Human Services Board and your responsibilities. So we really wanted to pull out just a few things there and then offer some comments and suggestions around how to integrate some of the Human Services Board functions into your county commissioner meetings, with the understanding that we currently have that you all don't intend to convene as a separate board, but to allow your commissioner meetings to be where you entertain agenda items that you're human, as a Human Services Board, that you need to review, take action on, et cetera. So I want to make a few comments there about that. But I really wanted to start with the first two items on the agenda, which are the review of the Child Support and the Child Care presentations that I provided to you. Those two programs are really very straightforward in terms of the county and their administration of those programs. Everything is pretty well-defined in either commission rule or policy for those programs, how they work, how they're carried out, how the duties and responsibilities are carried out for those programs. Those two programs are huge economic drivers in your community. There are a lot of public dollars that are coming in to your community to support those two programs, and so I'll just mention that as well. Obviously, there are important relationships within your court system for the administration of the Child Support Program and for childcare. I'll just mention that one of the topics that boards often entertain in childcare is how do we deal with the demand for childcare in our community because of the lack of resources oftentimes, that especially in rural communities, you often find where you don't have adequate childcare available in your community for everyone who needs it. And that's often a topic of discussion for commissioners, because the primary purpose of childcare is to support working families. I think about ninety to ninety-four percent of the families receiving childcare are working families. And then we want to spend, so let me just pause there and see if you have any questions about those presentations or feel that you need more information on those two programs, Child Support and Child Care. Well, hearing none, we will move into Child Welfare. I think each of those presentations were probably less than fifteen minutes. The Child Welfare one, however, I did record it, I think, three times, trying to hone it down a little bit and get it to something that I thought was reasonable. But Child Welfare, when we talk about Child Welfare, we're really not talking about one distinct program or one distinct service. You really have, we really have embedded a number of different large programs into one topic. Child Protection, Permanency, which is usually about foster care and adoptions, and also prevention services. How do we, how do we keep families and keep children safe in their own home so they don't have to experience an out-of-home placement? And so really, there are those four big programs that we oftentimes lose sight of when we use the word Child Welfare. If you listened to the presentation, you would have heard me say somewhere in the presentation, Child Welfare is not even defined in the statute or defined at the federal level. They actually only use the words Child Protection, Foster Care, Adoptions, Permanency Services, and Prevention Services when we're legally talking about those programs. Child Welfare is just a way for us to talk about the continuum of services that children and families may receive under the umbrella of this service array, which is not a voluntary service. So any questions about the presentation or you're listening? And I've moved down to Child Welfare, kind of the overview and the questions. If you haven't had a chance and you want to go look at the presentation, the first probably ten slides or so are really about giving you some background on the federal responsibilities that every state and territory has to carry out a Child Welfare Program or to have laws on the books to protect children and to ensure the safety of children if they can't be protected in their own home. And then the presentation, I move into, because there was a request from several people for us to provide the statutory references as well as any other references to the legal responsibilities. So the next grouping of slides, we share with you a lot of the statutory links, the commission rule links, and the links to the policy manual that states and counties work together to produce, which is sort of the practice manual that the workers use. And then finally, we wrap up the presentation by sharing with you some of the administrative slides around things that are happening in your community around Child Welfare, some other links to some other resources if you want to learn more, and talking about community partners. And where we really wanted to spend our time this morning, so let me just ask, before we get into the discussion around confidentiality, community partners, surveys, and community teams, are there questions that you had in the Child Welfare presentation that you would like for me to address before we get into these specific topics that you see here at the, at the very end? And we still will, as part of our responsibility, back to you when we close this project out and we, you'll have these presentations that you can always refer to. The one thing that I will say about these presentations is they won't become dated too quickly, but they will become dated because policy changes. And so I tried really hard to keep things at a very high level so it would not become dated too quickly. So those links should work. If you get a broken link and something's not working, we'll try to keep Brian current with how to access information if something changes. But we did try, the statute references will probably change, but everything's going to stay in seven B, you know, because there'll be changes to laws inevitably in any, any session of the General Assembly. So again, any kind of general questions about Child Welfare that you all might have? Or any topic on any of the slides other than the ones you see here that you want us to hit on that we had not planned to discuss today? And we chose these because these really are topics that are pertinent to your role, again, as a Human Services Board. And if not, we'll jump right into some of the discussion that we wanted to have with you about confidentiality and privacy, and Ravella and I are going to tag team this one.
Good morning, good morning. First and foremost, I'm Ravella Nesbitt, one of the consultants here at CCR. And we've had the pleasure, of course, to be with you all for the last several months, almost a year. When we're talking about privacy and confidentiality and Child Welfare, as many of you know, there are so many rules, so many regulations, policies, statutes that govern confidentiality. And those within the Child Welfare system can also be quite complex. You have Substance Abuse Act policies as well of really defining what you can say, when you can say it, how you can say it, and all of those different pieces. As part of this presentation and the documents that you have before you, the UNC School of Government has also created a tool to help aid in some of those, understanding some of those policies for you. And so that is also included in this document as well. As you can see, there are over two hundred and fifty different legal resources that are included. Needless to say, this is big, wide, and vast. And so the first thing I want to do is just acknowledge the roles that you are operating in. You're operating in the role of commissioner. You're operating in the role of Human Services Board. You're operating in the role of community member. So all of those roles hold different responsibilities, different hats, but they all are something that you hold very dearly. And I know sometimes it may be complicated on thinking. And I know sometimes it may be complicated on thinking about when you are approached or someone has a conversation or wants to have a conversation, which role, which hat am I wearing at that particular time? And so, you know, really initially just want to acknowledge that, you know, those roles are very significant, and they are very important to all of who you are and all of the roles that you hold and that you have. Sort of at the same time, you have individuals, you have families, you have folks within our community who are vulnerable and who also are in need of different things and different services. So you have children and families who may be experiencing life-changing circumstances. So a report is made, abuse neglect is discovered, family and children are propelled into a traumatic experience. And so you have, where trauma, you know, we've talked, you know, you've probably heard many conversations in relations to trauma. And there are, and trauma can be what we call big trauma or a little trauma. Everything affects people differently. And so I'm often reminded of when, if we could just kind of go there with a visual of a child who wakes up and is in their home and in their bed, and then they go to school, and before the day is over, where if they're someplace else for whatever reason, maybe it's abuse, maybe it's neglect, but for whatever reason, they have left all of the things that they know dearly, their toys, their snacks, their parents, their routine, all of those different things. And it is also our responsibility in holding all of those different hats to always remember those that are most vulnerable to us and within our community. And then you may have a parent who is on the other side of that, who is struggling, maybe struggling financially, maybe also struggling with substance use or mental health issues or challenges. And those are the folks who are vulnerable among us and experiencing various traumatic situations. And so again, you are holding these hats. You have vulnerable children and families who are a part of our community. And then we ask ourselves, okay, how is it that we perceive? And trauma is far-reaching. What may be traumatic for one person may not be traumatic for someone else. Often think about when, and you may experience this, I'm going to make it a little more relevant, when I go to visit someone's house, I don't know about you, you know, particularly if it's loved ones or someone, I enjoy being there, but after a couple of days, you're ready to come home, right? Imagine what that feels like for that child who's propelled into a complicated, complex system and needs one of your hats or both of your hats or all three of your hats to be on display, to make sure they are protected. So when we talk about privacy and confidentiality, it has a face. And so we want to be so much aware of that, to be able to minimize whatever traumatic experiences that a child or a family may have. As being part of this community, oftentimes we're maybe put in a place or a situation in which we want to be aware of those things that are happening, want to be aware as commissioners, as HS board members, as community members. We want to be aware and focus on what those things are as key takeaways, what's most important. This may be a moment in which we're focused on the high-level information that's needed to cover and be able to operate in wearing one of those three hats, to highlight the most important aspects of what that is and what that looks like, to be in a place in which we are protecting those children and those families by protecting the level of privacy and confidentiality. And I think one of the most realistic things is, is that we are individuals that are loving and compassionate and want individuals to be able to get what they need, to be able to respond as a commissioner, as a HS board member, and sometimes knowing exactly what to say or have a framework of what to say is also very helpful as well. So with that, I offer you a couple of statements that I think could be very helpful. And those statements are, I understand your concern. However due to the confidential nature of this matter, I don't have access to that information. How can I help you connect with the right person? Those are just some statements that I find that could be very helpful in understanding the vastness of privacy and confidentiality and child welfare. I think we all have collective desires to make sure that the children and the families are taken care of in the best possible way and recognizing that they are the vulnerable among us as well. So any thoughts, anything you want to add?
I'm going to follow Ravella with some, yep, we're getting closer to that wall every time. I'm going to follow Ravella with a few more, maybe somewhat sterile comments about confidentiality and privacy, kind of going back to those two hundred and fifty or more legal resources. I spent some time on that site using that tool, trying to navigate through. And I myself, as a child welfare professional, where my roots started was like, oh my gosh, I forgot all about this one. Oh, I forgot, you know, it is vast. And just when you think you know what you can share, you get to the point of, well, when can you share what you can share? And then you get to, and to whom can you share it to? Because it doesn't mean everybody. So, you know, we used to have these sayings in the office, when in doubt, leave it out, don't share it. You know, there are some general rules that govern just that protection and privacy. Ravella wears her hat as a therapist, and I wear mine more as a practitioner and a manager. And one of the school of thoughts that really helped me through my forty-year career was learning how to be, and it was a skill that really took a while to develop, was learning how to be compassionate and be available and be a resource to individuals and to families without taking in information for which I knew nothing about and could do nothing about. It wasn't within my purview, it wasn't within my role, it wasn't within my responsibility. And what I began to realize over time was I was having people, if they shared too much, they were living out their trauma with someone who couldn't do anything about it. I had no control, I had no ability to do anything more. And so those tips of Ravella's saying to you as a human services board, I can help you, and the way I can help you is getting you with the right person who has the right information, who has the right ability to do whatever that is that needs to happen for the family, for the child, for the kinship that are trying to do what they are doing to be supports of the family, et cetera. While we give you this website, I will tell you, I would use this website in conjunction with the practitioners and the legal staff because it really is a place where they go. You can think that you have information that's in a child's record and then all of a sudden realize that a psychological foremother is there, or there's something there that is covered by a whole different statute that I cannot share under the auspices of, when in doubt, leave it out. And if you, if it's information that you need to get to someone else, we just encourage you to do that so that, again, these traumatic situations can be handled by individuals and folks that really have the statutory authority to do their functions and to do their roles. So kind of want to see if there are things that you all need from us in terms of confidentiality and privacy. It is a very, very hard area to navigate, and you've got some really good supports around you with your legal staff and your practitioners to help you navigate that world of, what can I say, what can't I say, what can I have access to? And what do I need to leave to other individuals and other people? Is there anything that, but we wanted this to be very helpful to you? Because this is one of the more challenging areas of being a human services board and being commissioners, those three hats, those three hats, right? And then the next slide that we wanted to bring to your attention really is a place and a space where probably the information that is here is very beneficial to you at now, a time when you're putting your budget together and you're doing budget deliberations, et cetera. But it's very important that a human services board be in tune with the capacity that your agency has to carry out its statutory responsibilities. And so we wanted you to know that there is a structured way that the Department of Health and Human Services request and ask that child welfare agencies stay in tune with their capacity to serve their community, but also as the supervising agency, DHHS, asks that counties report to them annually through this survey their capacity to manage all of child welfare and the responsibilities there. So what I've done for you on this slide is share with you all the different elements of what that survey covers. Because as a human services board, as county commissioners, if DHHS needs to know it, you need to know it, because you need to know as the supervising local body for social services, what the supervising programmatic body knows about your organization. And so really understanding what's in the survey and having staff to spend some time with you, sharing what the health of their organization is in child welfare around their staffing. Because for child protective services, for permanency services, the people are the resource. It is their doing that is the service. And so just knowing this information and having this information readily available to you, I would suggest that, you know, you put some parameters as a human services board around what you instruct and direct your staff to do, which is if at any point in time they feel like they're failing and not able to carry out their duties in child welfare, that they update you on the status of what's going on with the survey. Because directors of social services are required to keep this information handy, to be able to use it, to be able to apply it in carrying out the statutory duties and responsibilities. Your director of child welfare, your social services director cannot at any time say, I can't do that investigation because all of our positions are vacant right now. And that is a true dilemma sometimes in a really, really, really small county. You are fortunate not to be, I mean, you may consider yourself small, but you usually have, you know, a unit of people who are responsible for carrying out those duties. But if someone's sick and there's two vacancies and someone's not available, that director is going down the hall and looking for another trained individual who might be in foster care, who might be in adoptions, who might have moved on to adult services or somewhere else in the agency to say, I need you to take this report. And there are times when you will have supervisors and leaders that are initiating because the need is real and it's there. So keeping a pulse on the staffing is really important function of the board. And now I'm all at Ravella, but I'll trip, come back to you and talk about another important function.
Very careful here. All right, I'll give that to you. All right, so I want to talk a little bit about community partners, and then we're going to sort of fold into community protection teams, child protection teams, and child fatality prevention. In our time here in Person County, we've definitely had the opportunity to have some one-on-one time with a number of community partners. I think we have met with over eighty individuals and a minimum of twenty community partners within Person County, which has been an absolute pleasure to sit with individuals and really understand and comprehend how invested they are into Person County. I often think about, each community is often like an ecosystem. People make choices and decisions on whether to live in certain areas based on the community partners and community resources that exist there. And so with all of the different community partners, many of them lead, they work with, many of them live here in this community. And we use the word partners, you know, intentionally because there is an enormous amount of collaboration and partnership that provides a very holistic approach within this community. And they are individuals that really help support this work within child welfare and all the other programs as well that DSS offers. And so I really want to highlight that, that this is, you know, a very collective collaborative effort across Person County. Individual organizations have, you know, collective community efforts, and they have individual community efforts as well. So we want to make sure that we are really leaning in to our community partners, but also understand that there are different various interdisciplinary teams, if we can go back two slides, if there are various interdisciplinary teams that do exist to help really support the child welfare efforts as well. The first one I want to mention is child protection team, and I'm not going to read all of this, but I really want to just kind of hit some highlights. This is one interdisciplinary team, a group of community representatives. So you have many folks from the community that come together, Garnet Lyta, DJJ, Child Advocacy Center, law enforcement, hospitals, various providers, schools, partnership for children, domestic violence, that are coming together within the child protective protection team, really to look at and identify gaps and deficiencies that may exist within resources that may not be there, all as it relates to abuse, neglect, or dependency. They also come together to advocate for system improvements and needed resources. They provide collaboration between organizations. So imagine having everybody in the room together, really talking about the needs of the children that are within our county. They inform county commissioners about various actions needed to prevent or ameliorate child abuse, neglect, or dependency. And so this is a very important team that does exist. And so this is a resource for you as county commissioners to know that this already exists, and there are a lot of organizations that come together to really have this opportunity. They also review child fatalities that exist in the county. And these are teams that are evident in various counties. So Person County has the privilege of being one of those, but they are very evident in all counties. So we want to go to the next slide. Oftentimes, child protection team, well, I would say child fatality prevention team can be a part of child protection team. And the child fatality prevention team, I'm going to slow that down and say it very intentionally here, child fatality prevention team, they review the records of all cases of any child fatalities that happened here in Person County. And again, this is a process that happens in all counties. They submit a report of what that is and what that looks like. But in the process of doing that report, they do a very extensive review of that child fatality. It often encompasses several days, they have come together with the interdisciplinary team members, so your community partners, they're coming together with all those different individuals, people from the state, other places, but they're coming together and really having a conversation around what happened, were there things that were missed, were there gaps? Is there an opportunity for additional resources so that something such as that doesn't happen again? So again, very important opportunities within Person County and within the child welfare realm as well. realm as well. And then, just a quick honorable mention, and that's child and family teams, I do want to mention. And that is also another opportunity for families and children. So this is a time where the parents or guardians or kin are coming together with the child to really be able to create, implement, and update a plan with that child and with that family. Often, DSS uses those to develop family service agreements or safety plans for the family and to implement it as a result. So again, resources that are already built in that are extremely helpful within the child welfare realm. So any thoughts, any questions?
The one thing I'll add is your community report does get sent to the state as your programmatic supervising agency. And all that information gets rolled up into looking at patterns and trends and, and to inform policy at the state level, be it changes in legislation or changes in policy or commission rule. So it's really important, again, as a human services board, you want to know what your state supervising agency knows. So receiving this report from your community annually is usually, when it's done, is, is really important because it gives you the opportunity to see at the county level, what are some of the gaps in services? What are some of the trending issues that you're seeing in your community as it relates to increases or decreases in child abuse and neglect? Because you want to know about both. You want to know what's working. You might want to do more of that. You want to know what's not working because you want to remedy that and make changes. And so, hearing from this prevention team, the fatality team, which I believe here in Person County is all one team, is a really good opportunity for you to keep a pulse on the trends and, that are happening in child welfare instead of being at that case-specific level, which is where, you know, you don't want to be. You really want to be looking at patterns and trends and what do we need more of and what do we need to be doing less of here in Person County to have a healthier community for children to, to grow up in. Any questions about those two things? Because we really want you in tune with the survey, that's your staffing, and that's the people that are carrying out the duties and responsibilities. And, and, and we want you receiving this report in a very intentional way of understanding, you know, what's the health here in Person County? What are our needs?
I do have a question.
So I do know that there is a quarterly report, the data workbook that addresses the workforce at DSS, that has to be submitted to the state. So do you believe that would be beneficial instead of waiting for the big annual at the end? And that way, like every quarter, we could kind of see where things are?
Absolutely. You know, if you've got the time to commit to the quarterly, or you could put parameters on it and say, "Anything that's in the red that's concerning, we want you to bring to us. Anything that's green and good to go, we're going to let our human services director manage that." But, you know, you may want to, or you may want to see the entire report, have it on your consent agenda, be able to pull out anything that you want to have discussion about. But the more you can review that information, right, the quicker you can react. It's just a matter of, of the time that you have to be able to commit to it. But at least do it prior to your budget deliberations and those kinds of things. But a really good point, yes. And so, the last thing that, that, this is an observation and we just wanted to bring it to, to your attention. As you convene as a human services board and your community knows that you are convening as a human services board, you may want to look at your protocols for public comments and how you manage those because you may have opportunities for people to come forward that want to speak to you about child welfare. And, and the public comment section of your board meetings is a great place to do trends and patterns and those kinds of things. It may not be the best and most appropriate to talk about things that begin to look like they're case-specific or tied to a particular incident or situation because you do run the risk of, your, your meetings are recorded, so it becomes public information. And so, just kind of wanted to highlight that as an area that you all may want to deliberate on and talk about, you know, in terms of length of time that someone is signing up and, you know, any details about what they're signing up for and staff having the ability to have a conversation with them about, you know, not using names or not doing certain things. And the smaller the community, the more likely that you can tie Sherry Bradshaw exactly to what she's talking about because we all know who she is and what she's doing and, and the role that she plays in the community. So it really is one of those areas here that we're happy to work with you on during the time that, that we're working with you over the next few weeks. But it is an area where we think we wanted to draw your attention to in terms of really making sure that the policy you have as commissioners will work as you deliberate as a human services board. And that really concludes what we wanted to do with you all today. We wanted to leave the rest of the time for you all to ask us any follow-up questions related to these slides or any of the other presentations even that some of you have been digging through that might have happened prior to your sitting as commissioners in Person County. So the FNS program, the Medicaid program, those are your two largest safety net programs for families and children and, and vulnerable adults in Person County is making sure that access to healthcare and, and access to the ability to supplement your food budget, especially today. Well, we appreciate the opportunity to do these reviews. You will have all this programmatic information in your booklet as well as a specific Person County fact sheet. And that fact sheet will tell you things like the amount of dollars that are coming into Person County about this program, the number of staff that are assigned to work in this program, some of the more detailed information that's specific to Person County. And we'll make those available as part of the packaging when we deliver our final report. We always appreciate our time with you, but we don't want to take any more than we need to so that you guys can go on with your, rest of your agenda. Thank you.
Thank you.
At this time, we'll move on to item number two, Board of Commissioners' roles and responsibilities. County attorney.
Okay, great. Okay, very good. Make sure that works. All right. Before we get started, I've got some handouts. Do not feel like you need to read this while we're talking. And I've got a few extra copies so our clerk can have one, and then a few extra copies if any members of the public want them. What I will say today is that board members, particularly folks who've been on the board for some time, will have seen some of this before. I know some of our new members have done roles or have done fundamentals of county government and also ethics training, so you'll have seen some of this before. I tend to think that, particularly when you're new to local government, it's a bit like trying to drink from a fire hose and that it is good to see these things more than once. So I'm going to go through these at a very high-level way. We're going to drill down on a few statutes and ordinances that are really important for you all. But today, this is for your training, it's for the public's education. If board members have, excuse me, have questions, feel free to interrupt to me. Or you, you know how to reach me if you have questions after our presentation today. So let's go ahead and get started. I've been asked to speak about the roles and responsibilities that you as a board have. And what I want to do is cover some very general topics. I want to talk about the county's regulatory authority, very generally what you can and can't do. And then I want to also look at what does the county manager do versus what does our Board of County Commissioners do? Also going to spend some time talking about the North County Open Meetings Law. And then the last part of my presentation, we're going to be talking about decision-making, legislative quasi-judicial decisions. Also with that, we're going to be talking about rules for voting and conflicts of interest, which are, of course, topics that come up quite frequently for the board. So again, I'm going to get started, but if you have any questions, just let me know. Okay, so when we talk about Person County, as you know, it is a unit of state government. It's established by the North County General Assembly and it's governed by federal law, state law, which includes a state constitution, state statutes, regulations, and case law, and local ordinances. Counties, more so than municipalities, also carry out some of the functions of state government. So when you're talking about priorities and policies, you as commissioners know there are certain things over which you do, do not have control. And we'll talk about that on the next slide, but there are just some things that the General Assembly has said the counties will carry out. So when we talk about the things you have responsibility for, you have responsibility for countywide fire protection, countywide emergency medical services, providing funding for your local school district, of course, county and health and social services departments, the sheriff's department, which of course is an elected office, and the register of deeds, which is also elected. So as you can see, those are all things that are set by state statute, how much you fund things and other sort of specific aspects, like we just saw a great presentation about the, the Health and Human Services Board, which you are now comprise. You have some discretion, but these are things that we have to deal with. Where we see a little bit more discretion for you and what you do is when we're talking about zoning and subdivision regulations. The statutes give you a fair amount of authority to create rules that work for Person County. That's also true when we talk about private road standards. Some environmental matters, although those are often regulated by state statute, and then also how we define and debate public nuisances. One big difference for municipalities, of course, is that counties, as a general rule, do not regulate or maintain roads. If it's a county road, what that really means is it's a state road. Of course, cities, that's a big piece of what they do within their jurisdictions. All right. So before we start the next few slides, any questions so far? And as you're going to see, we're going to kind of keep drilling down more specific and more specific. Okay, so I think this is old hat for our board members, but when we talk about the difference between the manager and the Board of Commissioners, I often think of it like a corporation with the county manager acting like the CEO, the chief executive officer of the corporation, and the board acting like the Board of Directors. It's not a, a perfect analogy, but it works pretty well. What does the county manager do? And this is all set by statute. In Person County, the manager is in charge of essentially all personnel, hiring, firing, and disciplining county employees, except for those that you directly appoint. You directly appoint me, you directly appoint the manager, you directly appoint the clerk. Also, there are elected offices, sheriff and the clerk of court, and they have control over personnel matters in their departments. One of the big things that you do, that she does also, excuse me, is she prepares and submits the annual budget. And then, the county manager, particularly when we're talking about departmental issues, is your primary contact for, for our commissioners. This is too small to read, you don't need to read it right now, but what I wanted to point out is that every year in our budget ordinance, the county manager has delegated contracting authority. So this is section thirty from this year's budget. And what it says is, these are the contracts that the manager can execute without coming to the board. And that's just for efficiency of operation. You as a board could say, "We want everything down to buying a box of paper clips to come to the board." You would also now have a new full-time job, you know, buying paper clips. So that's really not practical. Occasionally, the manager may come to you and say, "We need to tweak some of this authority up or down." And that's a conversation you can have. But if you're ever wondering, well, hey, why did that contract come to us? Why did that one, why do we never see it? It's probably because the, the manager's made a decision under her delegated authority. All right, so what do you do? The statutes are very, very broad. 153A-12 says, "Except as otherwise directed by law, each power, duty, right, function, privilege, and immunity of the corporation is exercised by the Board of Commissioners." As you know, you can abolish or create new departments so long as there's not a statutory mandate for them, and you can change the composition of boards. Often, there is statutory requirements with that, but you have a lot of authority. Now, this is the only slide I have about what you specifically do, and I was really contrasting on what the manager does. But there's a whole lot of things, and this is, this is County Commissioner 101, so I won't spend a lot of time on it, but there are things that are the core of your responsibility. You are the people who lead the vision of the community. You are the people who are a direct contact to the public, who listen to citizens' concerns, bring them to county government for consideration. You are also the people who engage in politics, you know, for good or bad, and that is a core part of what you do. So that's not in my slides today, but please understand that I'm not downplaying these important parts that are not essentially, or not exactly laid out by statute with, with what you as a board do. Okay, so again, these are too small to read, but I just put those up there. We talk about things that govern you, we've talked about statutes and this and that. Now, drilling down again, two big guidelines that you have, and in the packet that I gave you, the first item I gave you is your code of ethics. You may already have this, but in case you didn't, this is Person County Board of Commissioners' Code of Ethics, and this comes from a model put up by the School of Government. By statute, you're required to have a code. I've seen different varieties, but the one that the School of Government does is pretty good. And I'm not going to read all of them, but they have seven canons that are sort of your general ethic guideline, ethical guidelines. And I think it's useful just to kind of read those for you so you can be thinking about, when we talk about ethics, this is what at least the School of Government thinks and what your own code says. So Canon one is, "A county commissioner shall obey the law." Canon two is, "A county commissioner should uphold the integrity and independence of his or her office." Canon three is, "A county commissioner should avoid impropriety and the appearance of impropriety in all of his or her activities." And on this one, and on some of these others, this is part of where my role comes in. I sometimes am asked a question in the middle of a meeting and I have to respond, sometimes I have to look up the rules. I will say, you all do a really good job about this. I've been with some more dysfunctional governments before where I've been asked a fine point of Robert's Rules of Order, this or that, and I have to pull out the seven-hundred-page book in the middle of a public meeting and start thumbing through it. So what works better is if you think you may have a possible conflict of interest or there may be something that creates an appearance of impropriety, contact me in advance. Let's talk through that and we can figure out what the right solution is. And, and that communication is important. Remember, as to the whole world, I am bound by attorney-client privilege, and if you tell me something in confidence, I can't tell that to the public. Now, it's not confidential as to your fellow board members, but that I don't think was ever the intent. So Canon four is, "A county commissioner shall perform the duties of the office diligently and faithfully." And they have some specific information in there. Canon five, "A county commissioner should conduct the affairs of the board in an open and public manner." Canon six, "A county commissioner should regulate his or her extragovernmental activities to minimize the risk of conflict with his or her official duties." And Canon seven is, "A county commissioner should refrain from political activity inappropriate to his or her office." And they go on to specifically say partisan activity, as you know, is perfectly acceptable. So don't want any confusion to, to come up from that. But again, I would say with the code, if you ever have a question, please let me know. The other real sort of rulebook that you have, and again, I want to, I want to praise you all for doing a good job with this, is your rules of procedure. This is also patterned off of a set of rules from the School of Government. They do a good job. They roughly follow Robert's Rules of Order. And your fallback, if you ever have a hyper-technical procedural question that's not in the Rules of Procedure, your rules specify Robert's Rules of Order. What I will say though about rules of procedure is that really governing boards need as much or as little of them as they need. You all, in my experience, and this is true of the previous board, work collegially. You respect each other's positions and you're free to disagree, but you do it in a, in a civil manner. And I think as long as you do that, the times that you need to really dig into the rules of procedure are few and far between. Where I see sometimes a source of dysfunction is when one or more board members try to sort of weaponize the rules of procedure. You respect each other's positions and you're free to disagree, but you do it in a civil manner. And I think as long as you do that, the times that you need to really dig into the rules of procedure are few and far between. Where I see sometimes a source of dysfunction is when one or more board members try to sort of weaponize the rules of procedure and achieve policy goals through procedural matters. And I'm not here to say that's illegal, but it does make meetings a lot longer and maybe not as effective. So if you ever have a question about the rules, that is another reason I'm here and I'm happy to talk with you about them. Okay, so we are going to do, I'll just make sure I didn't skip a slide, a little bit of a deep dive into the North County Open Meetings Law. And I don't want to read it verbatim, but I've included the closed session statute in your packet. And this is an area of a lot of confusion for folks. Because sometimes members of the public think that everything should be in open session. And sometimes elected officials think, I want to talk about everything in closed session. And the North County statutes are actually pretty clear about when you can or can't do that. So if you have a public body, which the Board of Commissioners is, the presumption is everything is done in open session unless there is an exception. And there are 10 of them, we'll go through them quickly. Some you may never see, some you see pretty regularly. The first one is to prevent the disclosure of privileged or confidential information, including documents that are not public records. Occasionally, you'll get an update on a pending criminal matter. Occasionally, there will be a document that you need to see that is not a public record and this would be a reason to go into closed session. The second one is one I've never seen before, but I hope to get to see sometime, to prevent the premature disclosure of an honorary degree, and I think also of awards or things like that. So sort of, you want to, you know, honor Commissioner so-and-so, but you don't want the public to know about it yet. So that is a reason you can go into closed session. One that I regularly use is to preserve the attorney-client privilege. And this is anything that I can discuss under attorney-client privilege. We frequently talk about lawsuits that are pending. And if we are talking about a pending lawsuit, we have to put the name of it in the agenda item. Economic development is another really big one, including discussing tentative incentives. However, the statute is very clear, if you approve an economic development contract, that has to be done in open session. You can also provide negotiating authority for the purchase of real estate or for proposed employment contract terms. So you see this a lot of times where the board will be discussing with the manager or manager candidate possible terms. But again, the manager's contract has to be approved in open session. The other thing I want to flag for you, and this creates a lot of confusion, is that you can talk about negotiating authority to purchase real estate, but not to sell it. As a general rule, selling is done in open session. Occasionally, there are a few exceptions where you have a legal issue that needs to be discussed in attorney-client privilege, but mostly that's just for the purchase of it. Number 6 is what we call the personnel exception. It's to discuss individual public officers or employees. So remember, by statute, some folks are public officers, even if they're not elected. You can talk about those folks in closed session. You can talk about individual employees in closed session. Commissioner conduct, the way, if you're talking about a specific Commissioner's conduct, that has to be done in open session. Again, hiring or firing a manager or attorney, that's done in open session. You could in theory talk with attorney candidates, or I guess also clerk candidates, in closed session, but those final decisions are done in open session. And then the last few are to, if you're hearing about alleged criminal misconduct, so again, we talked about that first exception, to formulate plans by a local Board of Education relating to emergency response to incidents of school violence, to discuss public safety plans. So you may have occasions where the sheriff's department wants to tell you, here are some plans we have, but it's important that they remain confidential. That would be the time you would do that. Then also to view a recording released pursuant to GS 132-1.4A. That's the body cam statute. And there are some limited exceptions where you as a board can see those in a confidential manner. Okay, so any questions about closed sessions? If not, we're going to go on and we're going to keep drilling down further. And sort of buried in here is, huh, see, I knew it was going to do that. Okay, just hold there. We're going to talk about the kinds of decisions that you as a board make. And this starts to get into sort of paint drying territory, and I apologize for that. But it's incredibly important. And what I find in my legal practice, when I ask, what is the rule, the conflict rule? What are public hearing requirements? All sorts of things. It starts with, what kind of decision is it? And I think that's important for you to understand as well. So the vast majority of your work is legislative. Understand legislative includes things that you would think it would, like rezonings, zoning map and ordinance text amendments. But also, if you adopt a new county ordinance that has nothing to do with zoning, that's a legislative decision. With these types of decisions, you have broad authority to discuss and have opinions about them. So if there's a proposed rezoning out in the county somewhere and people have opinions on both sides, it's perfectly fine for you, before the hearing ever happens, to say, here's how I feel about this. Here's my opinion on this, because it's legislative. When we talk about contract approval and other decisions you make, those are technically legislative in the sense that they come before you and they follow this sort of general rule about conflicts of interest, which we're going to, we're going to drill down to that in just a little bit as well. The big contrast for that is what we call quasi judicial decisions. Now, for the most part, these are decisions made by your Board of Adjustment. You never see them. So we talk about variances and appeals of staff decisions. But there is a big one that you all consider, and that's special use permits. I'm going to talk about those a little bit more detail. But the big thing to remember with a quasi judicial decision is that when you know a decision is quasi judicial, treat it like a miniature court hearing and you are the judge and you are the finder of fact. And your decision has to be based on the record that's presented. So unlike that controversial rezoning that you talked about in church or the grocery store, if a citizen comes up to you and says, hey, what are you doing about this application? And you know it's a special use permit application, you have to say, I'm sorry, I can't even talk about it. I really don't know anything about it and I've got to wait for the hearing. And that, that's really about all you can say about that. And as a general rule, you make a quasi judicial decision by applying the county's standards to unique facts and they involve some discretion. So again, we have these standards, then we talk about conditions that get added to permits. And we'll, we'll talk just a little bit more about special use permits in a moment. So there are two other kinds of decisions that get made at county level. So you as a board really don't do administrative decisions, with one exception. When we talk about administrative decisions, they're sometimes called ministerial decisions. The most common people who are making these are staff and they have very little discretion. Sometimes you have a little bit of leeway written into an ordinance, but even that has to be clearly defined. And the idea is, is that if someone presents an application for something, building permit, zoning permit, you know, septic permit, what have you, if it meets the standards, the staff approves it. If it doesn't meet the standards, the staff denies it. But the staff is not the policymaker, they're just implementing it. The one exception, and this is written into our ordinance, are subdivision plat approvals. As you all know, our planning board approves subdivision plats. And then if they take no action or even deny it, it can come up to you. This is kind of a holdover from an older way of doing things. You don't see it as much anymore, but that is administrative decision. So the planning board can't attach lots of conditions and do that sort of thing and say, well, we need to add all these things. It either complies with the ordinance or it doesn't. And the conditions they attach would be, you need to do ABC to comply with the ordinance. So it's unusual, but that is one exception. The last one, I don't know that we see it a lot in Person County, but some local governments really like these. And those are advisory and non-binding resolutions. You as a board, if you see it in your wisdom, can adopt a resolution about any matter of the day. National, international, state, local, what have you. If you have no decision-making authority regarding that, then it's purely a non-binding decision. It's a resolution expressing your view on something. Okay, so we're going to keep drilling down. Now we're going to talk about voting standards. Before I do that, do you have any questions about this sort of breakdown of different kinds of decisions that we make? All right, so this is a big, the voting statute is a big deal for you all. It's a source of a lot of confusion. Because a lot of people think that you have a duty to show up for the board meeting, but you don't have a duty to vote. In most cases, a board member has a duty to vote. And I'm going to, and this is the entire statute. What it says is, "A board member, excuse me, the board may excuse a member from voting, but only upon questions involving the member's own financial interest or official conduct on matters on which the member is prohibited from voting under GS 14-234," and I put an asterisk there because we're going to talk about that in more detail, "or 160D-109." We're going to talk about that in more detail. What you need to know is if it has a 14, those are criminal statutes. If it says 160D, those are development statutes. For the purposes of this section, the question of compensation allowances to members of the board does not involve a member's own financial interest or official conduct. So you all can set your salaries, no problem. But those are really the only two exceptions. So if a matter comes before you and Commissioner X is, you know, it's their project, then they need to recuse themselves. Likewise, if a matter comes before you and it involves how Commissioner X was behaving and we think that's their official conduct, they need to recuse themselves. However, suppose a member of your church or your brother-in-law or whoever comes forward and has a project that needs your approval, unless there is some direct financial interest or official conduct, you have an obligation to vote. And we're going to talk about what happens if you don't. Your rules of procedure lay this out. This is Rule of Procedure, Rule 23, Duty to Vote. And it restates the law we just read, but then it adds, "A member who fails to vote, not having been excused, shall be recorded as voting in the affirmative." So if you abstain, that is a vote for that measure. Now, we're going to get back to those exceptions. As you'll see, I think there, you really just have to recuse if you're, if you're involved. Okay. So remember I said 14? That's part of our criminal statutes. And I've included as another handout, all of the criminal self-dealing statutes that apply to you. I'm not going to read them in great detail, but I want you to be aware of them. And think of this as really that flag for, hey, I need to remember that. And if I have any questions, come talk to the county attorney before the meeting. So we can try and figure that out. So 14-234 was the one that was mentioned in the statute before. And this is public officers benefiting from public contracts. And what the statute basically says is, "No public officer or employee who is involved in making or administering a contract on behalf of a public agency may derive a direct benefit from the contract." So it can't be your contract and you also voted on it. And that's really all the detail I want to provide you about that. Because what you need to know is that essentially everything in that statute is a defined term. You know, derive, make or administer. And really just remember that I might need to go back if I have a question about this. However, I do want to flag for you, and I think if you did the fundamentals of county government, this might have come up, there's an exception for smaller communities. And this occasionally comes up, I've seen it in a few municipalities. But if you are an elected official or person appointed to fill an elective office, that would be you, within which there is, of a county, within which there is located no village, town or city with a population of more than 20,000, according to the most recent official federal census, that would be Person County. Roxboro has a population of about 8,000 or 9,000, so well below 20,000. There is an exception to this rule. You can have a contract with the county, so long as the value is $60,000 or less and it's over 12, no more than a 12-month period. Now, there are rules about that. First of all, you can't have any rule in making it. It has to be sort of publicly done and there's some additional notice and reporting, but that is an exception. I, I don't recommend that we go and do that or anything like that. But the one time I've seen it, it was a community where they needed to make new shirts for town hall. You know, they needed to order 100 of them. Well, just so happened, there were exactly two people in the county who make shirts. And one was over in a community with which they did not think as favorably and the other was by their own council member. And they followed the process and the council member got the contract. It was very transparent and it was really recognizing that there are just limited number of vendors in some communities. So don't need to provide any more detail about that, but just know there is an exception. So 14-234.1, 2 and 3 are not in that voting statute. But with all respect to the legislature, that's just because they haven't updated the statute. These are also exceptions to that general statute. And the misuse of confidential information statute is just what it sounds like. If you've gotten confidential information in your role as a board member and you use that for financial gain, you may have violated this law and it is a class one misdemeanor. Again, if you're not sure, come talk to me. 234.2 is, you also can't financially benefit from your public position. You can't, you know, go out and sell votes and things like that. There are lots of ways you could run afoul of this, but generally, if you're trying to follow your ethics code that we talked about, I think you'll be okay. And the last one, this is a new addition the legislature adopted in the past five or six years. And it functions a lot like 234, but it applies to nonprofit getting local government contracts. As you all know, there are a lot of nonprofits in our community that carry out the work of, of the public. I mean, probably the most common one are your fire departments. Sometimes EMS is structured that way. I've seen them for a lot of different services and they can be really good ways to provide those public services. If you are on the board and you are also, quote, "associated with a nonprofit", then you're going to need to recuse yourself from a vote on a contract with that nonprofit. Now, "associated" is a word that I do want to drill into a little bit. Because what it really says is basically, if you're an officer of the nonprofit, then you're recused, unless it's created by state statute. So if it's a nonprofit organization that was created by the state or by the county, I left that out, then this rule doesn't apply. I've seen this apply. I had a commissioner in another community, he was also a member of the local fire department, which was a nonprofit. And we had to do a whole analysis. It turned out that even though he was called the Public Safety Officer, he was really just a member of the fire department. And he didn't have to recuse because he wasn't one of the directors or officers in that organization. But again, it's just a flag. Come to me if you have any questions. Okay, any questions about criminal self-dealing? And I want to be respectful of your time, so we're going to keep moving through these. Okay, so remember I said 160D is development? So when 160D was adopted, and I've included this statute for you. And again, this is one to think about later. But one of the great things that the legislature did is they adopted a conflict of interest statute that very explicitly spells out different circumstances. And when we're talking about 160D, 109, what we're really talking about are zoning decisions. So rezonings, special use permits, zoning map amendments, that sort of thing. And basically what it says is that if you're making legislative decisions, so this is zoning, zoning map, you have to recuse if the matter is reasonably likely to have a direct substantial and readily identifiable financial impact on the member. So a little like the earlier statute we saw, but a little different. Likewise, you have to recuse if the landowner of the property is subject to the rezoning petition or applicant for a text amendment is a person with whom the member has a close familial business or other associational relationship. So a little bit broader that you might be excused, but not all the way to a quasi judicial, which we'll see in a second. This same general standard applies to appointed boards, so our planning board would be a good one. There's some language about administrative staff in there as well. The last one is about quasi judicial decisions. Again, remember special use permits. And what you need to remember is that if someone's applying for a special use permit, our courts have said they have a constitutional, they have a right to the sort of ordinary due process protections. And so there are a lot more reasons that you can become conflicted out in a quasi judicial matter. And the, the board says, "Impermissible violations of due process include, we're not limited to a member having a fixed opinion prior to the hearing of the matter that is not susceptible to change." Remember again, controversial rezoning, I'm for, I'm against, my mind is not changing, that's fine. Controversial special use permit, if you say that, I'm going to say respectfully, you need to recuse. Undisclosed ex parte communications, that is, I had a conversation in the grocery store with a developer about the project. I went out to lunch, this, that and the other with somebody and we talked about it. That's probably going to create a conflict. If a citizen just comes up to you in church and says, hey, you know, what do you think about that? And I say, I can't talk about it, that's okay. And again, close familial business or associational relationship or financial interest in the matter. So just remember quasi judicial, it's a much broader set of reasons you can be conflicted out. All right, we are getting in the short rows here, folks. And I apologize, I had a typo in here, you're going to see the same slide three times. But remember, we talked about zoning map decisions and ordinance text amendments are legislative. I think I pretty well covered this, really don't need to say anything else about it. All right, there we go. Quasi judicial decisions, we've talked about a fair amount as well. The main thing that I want you to know is that if you're not sure whether something is quasi judicial or not, look at the table of permissible uses. This is in our planning ordinance, I gave you a copy of it. And I don't intend to go through it because it's a little idiosyncratic. It is, you know, this is the wisdom of the board at the time. They said this use needs a special use permit, that doesn't. But generally, if there's an X in the table of permissible uses, that means it is permitted in that zoning district. If there is a blank, it means it's not permitted. And if there is an S, it's permitted with a special use permit. All right, um, let's see here. And then, yeah, and these are my last two slides. The standards that you have to consider, generally speaking, when you have a special use permit come in front of you, are one, with a proposed use materially in danger, public health or safety. If it were located, were proposed and developed according to the plan, is submitted and approved. Does it meet all required conditions and specifications? Does it meet the planning? Does it meet the planning ordinance? Um, would it substantially injure the value of adjoining or budding property, uh, or is the use a public necessity? So you might say, yes, there's a property value damage, but we need this. Um, and then lastly, the location and character of the use of developed, according to the plan, is submitted and approved, will be in harmony to the area in which it is located and in general conformity with a comprehensive plan. Um, I could do a whole presentation on quasi-judicial training, and that's something that becomes important if you ever have a big controversial project or just something that requires a lot of work and a lot of testimony. But I think this is enough for today, and these are, um, all the slides I have. We want to just stay really high level and talk about your roles and your responsibilities. I'm happy to answer questions, uh, if you have any, and if not, I, I thank you for your time today.
Does have any questions?
Okay, thank you very much.
Thank you. All right. Let's see. At this time, we have a break scheduled on the agenda. Uh, we have, it is, uh, 10:15 right now, so let's adjourn for 10 minutes and reconvene at 10:25. Meetings in recess.
I have sales tax next, but I'm going to come back to that because that's a little more to talk about. We have our licenses and fees. Overall, we've had an increase of $130,000 in licenses and fees, driven by Medicaid reimbursements from prior fiscal years. EMS calls volume has gone up, and we have had an increase in our solid waste host fees. This has been offset, however, by a $50,000 reduction in inspection fees due to a delay in a Phase II project on Lucy Garrett Road. The project is expected to go forward, I just don't know when, and so I'm not sure when those revenues will be collected. Our state and federal funding, we have had an increase with our DSS state and federal funding, and also an increase with our pro- public library funding. This is offset a little bit because our state inmate reimbursement has declined. We had delayed payments from the city of Roxboro for our E911 services when I did this analysis. They have since caught up on those payments, so, but for this purpose, they're not in the numbers. And we've had a decrease in funding for Pats. During the COVID years, we had more grant funding directed towards Pats, and that has Our interest earnings have declined. I am sure that everyone has heard so much about the Federal Reserve and interest rates, whether they're going up or down, but they were reduced by a point last year, and that has affected our interest earnings. We have other earnings which are miscellaneous things that bring in revenue, some to speak of, or a sale of a Pats van. We have airport lease. We have had some donations to EMS. We had a contribution from the TDA to our Parks and Rec Department, and we've had an increase in our Pats uses, so the sale volume for passes has gone up. So now I'm going to go back to sales tax. Sales tax in North Carolina is reducing overall, in all the counties. Even the counties that surround us that are larger, like Wake, Durham, Alamance, the destination counties, they're seeing a decrease in their sales tax revenue. Person County's sales tax revenue seems to be flattening out a little bit. For, uh, it is also complicated by the fact that we are generally three months behind in sales tax. I'm only reporting to you on the first three months of the fiscal year. But for the first three months of the fiscal year, we collected, or we increased our sales tax collections by $102,000, which is down from 120 in the previous time period of fiscal year '24. I should have given you that, sorry about that. Sales tax re, sales tax seems to be flattening for me, and the people that I talk to in the state seems, they say it's going to be flattening for everyone right now, and no one exactly knows why. For Person County, we are, our sales tax revenue is complicated by refunds. Generally, refunds sound like a good thing, but for us, it's not. Not-for-profits have 18 months in which to request a refund from the state for their sales tax that they paid. Person County has a every-other-year trend, which you can see for refunds. I'm anticipating that fiscal year '26 will be the year that we have more refunds for sales tax. We don't pay them out, but it affects what we collect. So the best that I can project for fiscal year '26 going forward is just a flat sales tax year. I don't think we're going to lose any sales tax revenue, but I'm not anticipating the growth that we've seen in the previous years. Before I go to expenditures, does anyone have a question about revenues? Expenditures. Our total expenditure for the six-month cat, time period that we're talking about increased $3.6 million. One of the primary drivers of expenditures was personnel. We have had a $1.1 million growth in our personnel budget. I will say, part of this is due to reduced turnover due to our retention efforts, which is a good thing because we are not training and employing, spending the resources, the time and money, and having them leave and go to another county. We had a cost of living adjustment of 3.5%. That was during a period of time where inflation was between 4% and 5%. We've also had some increase in our health insurance and our retirement rates. Salary and wages, as I spoke, were part, are a big part of this. The top five drivers of that for department-wise are DSS, the sheriff's office, EMS, detention, and 911. Operating costs are just what they sound like. It is the cost of operating the county. Our top five drivers of the increase in operating are our school expense, our reappraisal. Our inmate medical costs have gone up significantly. Our PCC current expense, and the county farm. Speaking of the, but, of the county farm, I need to explain that this is money that we expend, but it is a grant, and we expect to receive it back. But for the six-month period of time that I am reporting to you on, it is an increase. Our capital line seems to have decreased. This is a timing issue as well. In previous years, when we were going to purchase a vehicle, we encumbered the money, essentially setting it aside, which was incurring the expense, and we may receive the vehi- vehicle in five to six months. However, now, we do not pay for a vehicle until it arrives in Person County. Our cost of transfers is basically transferring money from other funds, which I'll talk about in a few minutes, from the general fund to the other funds. The larger driver of this is a cost savings that we incurred when we purchased the Health and Human Services building. Previously, we paid a little over a million dollars in rent for the Health and Human Services building. That cost savings has been transferred to the capital investment fund, so that's why you see that transfer go up. And we did transfer some money to Person Industries Fund in support of that fund. Overall, we have had an increase in our expenditures over revenues of $1.5 million for this first six months. I'm going to squish that. I'm going to talk a little more about expenditures. I'm going to talk a little more about expenditures. I'm not sure if you understand, but Person County budgets by function. A function is just a grouping of departments. So I've already talked to you about transfers, the transfer of savings to the Capital Investment Fund, NPI. General Government is made up of many departments. I'm going to get, hit the highlights, I may miss someone, and if I do, please forgive me. It is made up of the Governing Board, Admin, Finance, Tax, HR, I'm sorry, Human Resources, General Services, and Elections. Some of the drivers of this increase are the reappraisal. We have purchased some vehicles. Our IT Fund has had an increase due to upfitting a lot of the Sheriff's Department vehicles and purchasing some computers. We have had an increase in archive project for the Registered Deeds, some legal cost. We had a very successful Household Hazardous Waste Day. I'm told that that was the best one we've had yet. Our liability costs for insurance have gone up due to the purchase of the Health and Human Services Building and the CHAP Building, along with newer vehicles. And we had an election, which always costs a little bit more. Education, as I mentioned, we have increased our funding to PCC and to the public schools. Our Public Safety is made up of the Sheriff's Office, EMS, nine-one-one, inspections, and Animal Services. Inmate medical costs have gone up significantly and that is a driver of this increase, along with higher salaries in the Public Safety function overall, with the exception of Animal Services. We have also had some EMS purchases for equipment and technology. Transportation is a smaller function. It is made up of Pats. And if I didn't define Pats for you, it's Personnel and Transport Services and the Airport. Those are the only two things in the Pats function. We recently purchased some Pats vans that have been on backorder for a couple of years. So that is the expense that you see there, part of the expense that you see there. I can tell you that we have received a ninety percent reimbursement for those vans, but in February. So for the time period that I did the analysis, you don't have that. Also, there were some costs with the Airport as far as painting a tower and some compliance issues with a fuel pump, so that makes up the increase. Our Culture and Recreation Department are all of our parks. It is the museum and the library. The increased cost that you see here is part of the county farm, but as I mentioned, we will be reimbursed for the majority of those expenses. We've also had increased maintenance and repair costs across all of the parks and an increase in our part-time staffing at the parks and at Mayo. Human Services is mainly made up of the Health Department and Social Services. We have had an increase in all personnel costs in those departments. Adult and Protective Services costs have increased. Contracted services for security has been a big increase at DSS. We've had some medical and equipment, or medical and educational supplies increase in the Health Department. Economic Development, this increase, or this small little increase, is mainly made up from Planning and Zoning, GIS, and the EDC Department. And this is just some personnel costs. And we did have a reduction in our Forestry Services costs, so that offset that a little bit. And we get down to the very bottom, Environmental Protection. This little function is made up of Soil and Water and our Landfill Post-Closure. This is a grant, main, this increase is mainly a grant in the Soil and Water Department. I received an email this morning that we had started getting the reimbursement for the expenses that we put out for this, but for, like I said, for this six-month period, this was the increase. Any questions about expenditures?
Yeah, I'm just curious why inspections is with Public Safety and it's got, with the other development.
My, I have no idea. I, but my guess is because it is related to the safety of the buildings, but I don't know. That's just how it has been grouped as a function and it's part of the audit. And that's where we get the functions. But I can research that.
Okay.
If you really want. Okay. Other funds. So when the manager presents you the annual budget, all of what we talked about is going to be in that. But there are a few other funds in there that are going to be in the annual budget as well. And I have listed the funds and the descriptions. And I'll go over them if you like, or if you want to just ask questions about anything that you may have a question about that might be easier. You can ask now or later, I'm open. Any questions? Okay. If you have a question at a later time, please let me know. I'd be happy to explain a other fund to you. Our multi-year fund. This is not in our annual budget because as it says, it's a multi-year fund. This is a fund that is used to fund programs that span multiple years. This fund allows us to have better tracking of the revenues and expect, expenditures over the duration of the entire project. But I wanted to let you know that these did exist. They are the American Recovery Act, which is the R funding. We have the Airport Construction, Airport. Our Capital Improvement Project, or any of our larger projects that are fifty thousand dollars or more, they are funded in this. We have the two thousand twenty-three Limited Obligation Fund. That funded the Person High School ADA improvements. We have the two thousand twenty-four Limited Obligation Fund. That funded property acquisition for the county, the Health and Human Services Building, the CHAP Building, PI merger, and South Elementary School Roofing. We also have the Opioid Settlement Fund. These are funds that we are receiving that are used to offset and mitigate some of the opioid crisis. Any questions? About this? Okay. Debt service. Currently, our outstanding debt for Person County is just a little less than fifty million dollars. I have it broken down percentage-wise. Forty percent of that debt belongs to the county. Thirty-nine percent of that debt are the schools and twenty-one percent of that debt is PCC. Our debt service, which is our payment on the debt for fiscal year twenty-five, is going to be one point one seven million dollars. In fiscal year twenty-six, this is going to increase to a little over four million dollars, mainly due to the borrowing of the two thousand twenty-four Limited Obligation Bonds that we spoke about earlier. This increase is two point nine million dollars in debt service from fiscal year twenty-five to fiscal year twenty-six. Fund balance. So fund balance is not just one thing. There are several categories in fund balance. We have restricted fund balance, which is just what it sounds like, it's restricted. We have funds that are directed-use funds. We can only use them for what we are legally allowed to do. A couple of examples of this would be the Opioid Settlement Fund, the Law Enforcement Restricted Fund, and the Registered Deeds Fund. They all have directed uses and we comply with those uses. We have the Assigned Fund Balance. This is a section of money, a pot of money, that the Commissioners vote for and put aside for a specific project or projects. A example of that would be the broadband infrastructure. We have set aside a certain amount of money to bring higher-speed internet to Person County. And then we have Unassigned Fund Balance. My graph. This is money that is available for any purpose at the Commissioner's behest. You can see that from fiscal year twenty-three to fiscal year twenty-four, our fund balance took quite a drop from thirty-five point four percent to twenty-one point seven percent. I have concerns that if we do not figure out a way to increase revenues or decrease expenditures, that we may drop a little bit further next year. I can only give you an accurate fund balance once a year and that is at the end of the audit. Everything else is just an interpretation because it's a moving number all year long, except that one time. So, to summarize, our revenues have increased by two point one million dollars through December due to our property tax and sales tax growth. Although the growth is reported, I'm anticipating that sales tax is going to be flat, mainly due to lack of sales tax coming into North Carolina and the year that we expect will have more refunds. Our expenditures grew three point six million dollars at mid-year, causing a net deficit of one point five million dollars between expenditures and revenues. I spoke already about the county, about the debt that the county has, so I'm not going to go over that. Again, fund balance took a drop and I worry about the lack of revenues coming in and the expenditures. But I will say that staff continuously works on this every day, all the time. And we have been implementing some new things to improve our financial situation in Person County. And I'm happy to take any questions if you have them.
Can you go back to the debt service?
I can.
And break that out a little bit more. I know the schools, um, that's a project that goes back to bringing them up to ADA compliance and.
It's a lot of projects that go back many, many years. It's roofing projects and other things. This is a, this is all the debt that we have and I can break it out. I have, I can't do it right now, I'll look it right now, but I do have a spreadsheet that I could show you all the projects. But there are many projects ins, inside of this. And it's not just the ADA compliance with the schools. It's roofing and other things that we've done in the past.
Okay.
And we do include a detailed analysis of that in, when we present the CIP to the board in April. There's a section.
Spreadsheet in the back. So the CIP report that I gave you earlier has that in it from last year.
All right, thank you.
Are there any other questions? Well, thank you for your time.
Thank you. Item number four, Property Tax Revenue Preview and Reappraisal, uh, reappraisal update. Russell Jones.
Good morning. I'd like to share with you some numbers that we can use to start working on the county budget. Break this down into three different categories, your real property, your machinery and equipment, and your state appraised properties. First of all, we shored up our budget figures and looked at where we're going to end the fiscal year. We had budget for five point one nine six million dollars in property tax valuations, but we came in at five point three of, which is a hundred and twenty-six million dollars more than anticipated or two point four percent higher. Uh, you always want to be higher on your actual receipts than your budget. Eighty-eight million dollars was due to changes in state appraised. So our state appraised properties came in higher than we thought they would. So comparing where we are today and where we'll think we'll be for next year, I'm cha, suggesting an increase in the real property value from three point seven to go to five point six. Uh, this is due to reappraisal. The second category, machinery and equipment, this is your business equipment, your personal property, your boats, jet skis, um, farm equipment, things like that. So on your machinery and equipment, it always goes down first. So the machinery is a year older today than it was last year when we talked. So that's about a six percent drop. But at the same time, we know there's new machinery being brought into the county. Some new investments we already had filed or from Polywood and from US Liquor. But we also feel that GKN will probably be lower in their numbers. Uh, we haven't heard from Spun Taker Eden yet. And these listing forms that tell us how much equipment is going to be in the county aren't due to April fifteenth. So this is kind of a, a best guess at this point. Even harder to nail down is your state appraised property. So state appraised for last year was the highest we've ever had at one point zero four three billion. And state appraised is mostly Duke Progress, but it does include all your other utilities like gas companies, um, your phone lines, your cell phones, your railroads, a little bit of everything in there. It also includes Mariah Energy Center. Most years, we would budget down a little bit for state appraised, just to be conservative, but I'm leaving that flat and I'll explain that on a future slide. Thinking we're coming around seven point two billion dollars for the valuation. On the real property side, of course, we just sent out real property reappraisal notices and that's why the increase is there. And we're being very conservative with that estimate because we know there will be some appeals and some changes there. This slide does not include your motor vehicles, which is paid at DMV Tag Office. Uh, we're anticipating that going from four hundred and sixty million dollars to about five oh five and that brings in three point six million dollars every year. Very similar slides for your fire districts. And there's a fire district, fire tax and rescue district. We always call it the fire tax, but includes everything. Same idea here, state appraised being budget flat, machinery and equipment pretty much flat. And then, of course, your big changes there, real property. When you look at machinery and equipment, you think that's what the industries pay. But don't forget that real property does include the industry's land and their buildings and the commercial property too. So the real side is not necessarily all residential property. Again, motor vehicles is not included in this slide. We're estimating about a four hundred and thirty, a four hundred and thirty-five million dollar revenue evaluation for motor vehicles for next year. Us changing the state appraised, it shows how the state appraised values have changed over the years. And we're always a little conservative. What happens to state appraised is the state doesn't even know until May first what the reports are from all the state appraised. So we can't guess that today. Also, once they get the form and tell the, the initial numbers, they have to split that number to all jurisdictions in the state. So we don't know the state appraised numbers until September one, which is after you've already set the budget. So always very conservative there. But with the idea that Duke Progress is planning expansions here and Mariah Energy Center is under construction, I'm recommending that we don't lower that number down like I've done every year and in the past few years. The only time we actually had a drop was in nineteen and twenty. And this graph here probably does a better job of showing how it's pretty much stabilized at right around a billion dollars. I think it will be higher next year than we're budgeting at one point zero four three. But, uh, at this point, we don't really know, but we do have two or three more months before you actually adopt the budget, so we can shore it up. So that what one penny will generate is probably the most exciting slide that we have to explain and understand. This is not intended to be your published revenue-neutral rate at this time. This is just to give you some idea of what you're looking at and what it could be. So the current tax rate was seventy-two-two-five and the fire tax rescue district was point zero five, so one nickel. And using a collection rate of ninety-seven and a half percent. I think we did, we did do a ninety-eight percent last year, but historically, we've done ninety-seven and a half. The revenue is just an estimate at this point. As appeals come in or state appraised gets more accurate or the business listing come in, that number will change. Because the valuations are changing, also what your one penny will generate changes. So last year, uh, one penny on the tax rate was five hundred and fifty thousand dollars. Now it's seven sixty-one. And one penny on fire and rescue was four sixty-five and now it's six thirty-eight. And of course, as your valuations change, as your appeals come in, that will change. As far as the reappraisal, how that's working out, um, we are taking the informal appeals this month with a deadline of March the first. We plan on working those appeals and getting notices back out to the taxpayers who did appeal by the end of March. Once March one is rolled around, we know how many appeals we have. We'll get with the Board of Accomplishment and Review to set their time. They have to meet between the first Monday in April and first Monday in May to start accepting appeals. Then we'll work through that process so we can have some better numbers for budget. Uh, I did find that there were twenty-one counties in North Carolina that did reappraisal this year. And we were one of the first counties to send our notices out, which is a, a good thing because we do our budget process earlier in some counties. And we were coming in about a fifty-four percent increase. It sounds astronomical until you look at twenty-one counties doing reappraisal this year also. They're averaging fifty-seven and a half percent. The lowest county of Surrey County, Foothills, Dotson, I believe is the city seat, their increase is twenty-five percent. The next lowest was forty-two percent in Lenoir County, Hickory. The highest was Dare County at ninety percent. So that's almost doubling the tax value. The one that I was watching out for that just got numbers on yesterday, Durham County is anticipating a seventy-five point two-two percent increase in their appraisal. We don't use other counties to figure out our increase. We use our local sales, we use our local market. But it is reassuring to see that we weren't the only ones out there that had significant increases. Last year, Grahamville had seventy-seven, Casaway forty-two, Warren had eighty. The increases we're seeing here matches the fact that North Carolina is the third most desirable state for people to move to. People are paying different prices today than four years ago. Any questions?
Actually published the, uh, revenue-neutral rate.
Actually, I do not publish the revenue-rate. It's done by the county Commissioners at Budget Adoption. So as we get closer to that budget adoption and part of the budget adoption packet will be that final revenue-neutral rate. So when we. So as we get closer and we work through the appeals, if we know we won't get all the appeals done by June thirty and you have to adopt a budget, we will work the high dollar appeals first. We'll just go ahead and get them out of the way. Knowing we have to set a budget, knowing we have to move forward, but that budget, that final revenue neutral rate is published as part of the budget adoption. It should be similar to fifty-six. I know Grahamville County last year went out early with a number like, like this, but then in the final adoption, they were three cent higher than they thought revenue neutral because of the appeals. I'm holding some money for the appeals, hoping that this number will be somewhat accurate. The fire tax, fire rescue district and the county tax represent a twenty-two percent drop in the tax rate to get to revenue neutral.
Just make a comment that I appreciate you checking out the other counties. I checked in with some data from them as well. And I don't know if I could post this as a motion to my colleagues, but I was just thinking back before I was a commissioner and I was watching how, you know, there were some concerns from our constituents about DSS and how things was happening, were happening there. And we, the commissioners at the time took it upon themselves to call in the state just to see if everything was okay and to get feedback from them and move forward from there. And I remember the last meeting, you said that the same thing was done for our tax office here, I think back in twenty thirteen. And so I would like to see that again, because it's been over ten years and I'm not saying anything is wrong here because we are, we live here in Person County, so we're impacted as well as commissioners. But just to have that extra layer of assurance for, you know, our constituents here, of course. Well, everyone who lives here in Person County, we're paying taxes, we have our properties. And, you know, there are some concerns and again, like you said, it is happening across the state. But, you know, I would like for, to see if the state Board of Equalization Review could actually come in and conduct like a peer review just to, you know, see or just give some oversight or some insight to the process here. And again, it's not to say, you know, that anybody's doing anything wrong, but it's just, I understand like the increases, I think you said Durham went up seventy-five percent. Dare County ninety percent, but we're here in person and I'm thinking about person. And to see if we could just have some type of peer review from the state board to come in just to review, just to give some insight, oversight of our process regarding our reappraisals for this year. So I don't know if I need to make that a motion or how that needs to proceed.
Clarify what they did in twenty thirteen as part of their review. Back then, none of the registered deeds records were online in a way they could search. So what they did, they came in, they studied our sales ratio. So they had to come to the office and look through the deeds and make sure the excise tax and the price that we set it sold for matched. Now that's done electronically. So them needing to come here and do that, we send the sales ratio to them on a quarterly basis. Except in our reappraisal year, we have to wait to the end of the year because the values are changing. But we send that to them on a quarterly basis and they review that. They're able to read that electronically. So come in here, and that was done by the Department of Revenue, not by the, as you refer to as the State Board of Equalization. It's actually called the Property Tax Commission.
Okay, thank you.
The Property Tax Commission does not come in and review tax offices. What they do, they're a third appeal board. So it's a one-on-one case if you appealed to the Board of Equalization, only if you appealed to Board of Equalization. And within thirty days, file a case with the commission or you're allowed to take your case there. So North Carolina has a very fair process for appeals. Informal is the easiest way to point out things that we may have overlooked. A lot of the corrections are done at the informal level where you just come and fill out the one piece of paper, ask us what to double check, or sit down and talk with us one-on-one. After that, the Board of Equalization is the first formal review. And that's that quasi-aditional board where you sit down and talk to Board of Five about your property values. And then they make a decision and that's followed by a letter and thirty days you can go to the state. Unfortunately, we have twenty-one counties at the state level doing reappraisals this year. At the state level, they're going to be overwhelmed. Sometimes your property tax remission cases can take two or three years to be heard. While that case is being heard, however, you don't have to pay your taxes. But once it's settled, if you didn't pay your taxes, you have to pay the interest. So most people while under appeal will pay the tax bill and then once it's settled, it's all done, it all set up at the very end. In twenty thirteen, we did have a lot of cases go to the commission. We had fifty cases filed. Most of them were lake properties. We went to the commission for one lake property at that time. And the commission confirmed that we had done everything correctly. Of course, we always have issues. We got thirty thousand properties. I'm not going to be wrong. But as soon as that case was decided and the word got back that you really had to have a case, not a percentage of increase or something that was wrong, you had to have some real facts. All those cases got dropped. In my twenty-eight years I've been to the Property Tax Commission, probably seven times, one was for the same taxpayer three times, and we only lost one case. And the lost case was a reduction. All the rest of the cases, they upheld the county bay. So we've been tried and true at the state level. They have looked over our data on these appeals and confirmed that we were correct. They are looking at the sales ratio on a regular basis electronically now. If you'd like for me to reach out to them and see what services they can offer, we can definitely do that. But with twenty-one counties doing reappraisal, their resources can be limited.
And that's understandable. It was just, what department again did you say that you all submit data to on a quarterly basis?
So we're under the North Carolina Department of Revenue and it's the Property Tax Division. The director there is Tony Simpson. And there's a whole staff there. The Appeal Board is called the North Carolina Property Tax Commission. They meet once a month for a week and there's several, there's five members there and it's appointed by the governor and some other positions. That's the other Appeal Board.
The board meeting of the North Carolina Association of County Commissioners. And you can imagine that there was a lot of talk about this topic as people convened from around the state. And they did offer a service where they could do a peer review of revows through their, led by their tax person, I think his name is David Baker. And that was at no cost. So I don't know if that's an option.
So David Baker is the retired Property Tax Division head for Department of Revenue. And he is now your liaison between counties and the County Commission Association. So that's a very good resource. I did not realize he was offering that. Him and Kurt Boone is the appraisal guru at the School of Government. He's another great resource if you just need someone to pass some ideas through. And then of course, Chris McLaughlin is our, more of our collection side guru who helps us at School of Government with collection roles.
Okay, so could we look at David Baker and his services for a peer review? Not so much as getting as in-depth at, I'm glad Russ, you explained all the different layers and what they do. But I don't think a peer review would be as much in-depth as what I was initially saying. If I'm saying this correctly.
So I think in the spirit of what you're asking is for, we instruct staff to reach out to Mr. Baker and ask if he could come up here and do a peer review and give his input on if the appraisals seem to be accurate. So that we are doing our due diligence as the board to ensure that we're doing the utmost to make sure everything's correct on that. And with that, with you saying that, is that in the form of a motion?
Yes.
Okay. Alright, we have a motion on the floor. Is there any more discussion? Alright, having here and none, all in favor of the motion, vote by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, the motion's approved. And county manager, will you communicate with the rest of the board on the timeline of when these services can be provided?
Yes, I do believe this will be provided through the NCACC's County Outreach Services. What they do is resource consultation teams convene and facilitate knowledgeable, respected peer groups, review groups to assess and analyze county departments in order to provide recommendations on how to improve operations. And I think that tax is one of the departments that they specialize in reviewing. So I will reach out to them and find out what that timeline looks like and what the services entail.
Alright, thank you.
One final thing, this is not related to reappraisal, but there is a House Bill fifty-nine that's been submitted for next year. That would increase if passed the senior citizen exemption income limit. Right now it's thirty-seven thousand nine hundred dollars. That would go to forty-eight thousand. Right now we have nine hundred or so households receiving benefit from the homestead exemption. That could possibly double the amount of households that benefit from that. So keep an eye on that. Hopefully this is a way to get the word out that people who applied this year and did not get approved because their income was too high, next year may be a good year to reapply. And we'll get the word out once we know that rules pass. But House Bill fifty-nine is trying to change the income limit for seniors, which will be great for this county.
Do we need a motion, a motion for that?
I'm sorry?
I was asking if that's something that we can support as a board, getting that HB fifty-nine, showing support for that.
We, we can. We would have to prepare a resolution for adoption, showing support on that. And, and if that's the direction that the board would like to go to, we can inform staff to have a resolution available for at our next meeting.
I don't know the timeline of the approval of those, but I would like to do that, yeah.
Okay, we have a motion on the floor for a resolution supporting House Bill fifty-nine. Alright, any other discussion? All in favor, vote by saying aye. Aye. Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion's approved. And being that we've approved the, the resolution, if this is in the spirit of the board, by the unanimous vote, I will, once it's prepared, I will go ahead and sign.
And then we can have it ratified at your next meeting.
Thank you. Any other questions for the tax assessor? Alright, thank you. Alright. Next, fiscal year twenty-six budget preview, county manager.
Good morning. The next item on our agenda is to preview the upcoming fiscal year twenty-six budget based on the information that we currently have. And we will also review the timeline to continue working through this process. First, I would like to highlight some of the accomplishments that we've already seen in the first half of this fiscal year. Within fiscal year twenty-five, some of the top items or budget drivers for us are the county workforce. We have worked to enhance employee pay and benefits. So the board did vote to implement several benefits changes in this fiscal year. We have also added the cost of living adjustment and in order to support the continuance of the classification and pay study that we implemented a couple of years ago so that as a county we'll remain competitive in the market. And this helps with our recruitment and retention. And we have continued our merit pay plan as well. We have seen improvements in retention. So we have a lower turnover rate. You have likely seen less jobs posted. We get routine emails from human resources that show the available positions. And those have decreased in frequency. We just don't have as many open positions. This is a budget driver. As Tracy mentioned in her presentation, we are not seeing the salary savings in the current fiscal year lapsed salaries is what we refer to that we've seen to a larger degree in other years when we've had a higher vacancy rate. With our positions filled, we're paying out a hundred percent of salaries in many of our departments. And a higher percentage in others just because we don't have those vacancies. And then we have worked on restructuring the human services functions this year in creating the Consolidated Human Services Department with social services and veteran services. You had the presentation from the CCR consultants this morning and we are concluding our agreement with them. Over the next month or so, you will receive a final report. But we have been working closely with those employees to implement changes as a result to the consolidation and look forward to receiving the report and continuing to make improvements in those functions. Capital needs for the county, we did purchase the human services building. So we had a lease on that building for the past twenty years. It's no longer leased. We now own it. And we are making some investments in improving that facility. So we have had some HVAC replacements that have already made a recognizable difference. And we are working on assessing the roof conditions as well as one exterior wall and ensuring that the building envelope is in sound condition. We have also worked on upgrading some lighting within the building to improve the workspaces. So we will continue to work on improvements within the capital budget that we have allotted in this fiscal year. We purchased a building for Piedmont Community College's chat building. This is their Center for Health, Advanced Technology and Trades. And so they are very excited about expanding their programming into this new space. And they are actively seeking grant funding and other allocations to support the financial aspects of the outfit of that building. And then we are near completion of the Person Industries and Recycling Center merger. I wrote completed because that is definitely anticipated in this fiscal year. Our current lease for Person Industries is up in May. But they are able to start occupying part of the addition this week, I believe. And then some of the other remodeling of the current facility will continue. So we do anticipate that that will be completed this year. So that's great progress and something that we've been anticipating for years. As far as new initiatives go, we implemented a strategic plan and we'll have further discussion about that following this presentation. We implemented the Enterprise Fleet Management Program. And we've also improved our public record to response process and online access to meeting materials. As well as just other information that's generally available to the public such as our appointed boards and committees and working with our departments just to kind of streamline the information that's presented and ensure that it's current through our website and social media platforms. Within economic development, we did facilitate the sale of the Person County Mega Park, which was privately owned. The county had an option to purchase that. And that has been sold to Microsoft. We've negotiated the sale of the county-owned North Park site, which is currently under contract. And expanded broadband service through partnerships with NC Dit, Brightspeed and Spectrum. So the county has reserved close to two point seven million dollars of the funding we received through the American Rescue Plan Act towards broadband expansion. And you can see a lot of activity going on in the county now, primarily with Brightspeed and Spectrum as they are digging and laying fiber and getting people connected. So we still have funds in reserve for the next round of the grant programs. The CAB two point O, which is completing access to broadband second round, is currently in the works. I think it's this week, maybe yesterday, final proposals were due from internet service providers. So we'll be going through those proposals and hopefully working with the state to make another award for further expansion. So we will continue to work on that with the goal of a hundred percent of our locations throughout the county to be connected to fiber.
Any timeline on the PCC moving into that building by chance?
I do not. I walked through it with them a few weeks ago. So they are engaging in some design services at this point in order to lay out the area and it will be a phased move in. So they will start doing certain programs there and then over time build it up. But I'm not sure when that first offering will be. They're already using it for some training and meeting spaces now. Any other questions from this slide? Okay, so looking forward to fiscal year twenty-six. Looking at that county workforce as a budget driver for us. So far, there are twenty-one point five new positions requested by county departments. And this is very preliminary. I'm not going to have I'm not going to have any specifics to share with you all today on what that entails. So these are positions that our departments have identified a need for moving forward in order to provide the level of services that we need to provide in fiscal year twenty-six. We will go through a process at the staff level to really dig into those requests and then determine what can be recommended for funding in the next fiscal year. But you all will be, you will receive all of those details. You will receive information about our analysis as far as the recommendation. And then you'll have further review of that as you work towards adopting the budget in June. We're looking at inflationary measures currently. We have an index where we do an average of three separate measures in order to calculate what would the recommended cost of living adjustment be in order to maintain our salaries in terms of inflation. And right now that is tracking at three point four percent. And so that too is a moving target as new information comes out month by month. But we do measure that increase over the past year when we set our salaries at the beginning of the last budget process. And as you recall, we did a three point five percent COLA for fiscal year twenty-five. And that index is looking at it about three point four percent right now. We have preliminary health insurance renewal at a ten percent increase. Again, this is a preliminary figure. We have a meeting next week to talk with our broker on what has changed since we got that preliminary number and to talk about strategies for how we can contain cost and limit that increase in the next fiscal year. But as you know, personnel makes up a large percentage of the county budget. And salaries and benefits are certainly drivers as we're looking at that full budget for next year. When it comes to equipment and supplies, and again, these are very preliminary numbers. Departments have entered their budget request into Munis. Those were due at the beginning of last week. So I just took a quick look at the requests that are in there so far. Things are subject to change. And again, we're going to have individual meetings with all of the departments to get more information about their request and find out, you know, are there ways that we can minimize increases that we're facing or make adjustments to offset it in other areas? But we are seeing that food expenses within the jail are rising. That's one of the larger increases in next year's budget. This year, we implemented the ALS three sixty program for emergency services, or EMS, and fire. EMS, the EMS portion of that is budgeted in the general fund. It was offset by some contract reductions that we had previously for maintenance. And in this current fiscal year, we paid for that contract with American Rescue Plan funding. So the idea is in the next fiscal year, that will be absorbed into the general fund budget. So that will show as an increase and take that, the funding source will become general fund revenues rather than the ARP funds that we use this year. And then we are seeing increases in technology requests from our departments, as well as increases needed for ensuring that we have a high level of cybersecurity in place. These service contracts and maintenance agreements just tend to increase year to year regardless. And then we do have more needs in those areas. With our services, we are seeing that our legal services budget has gone up this year. And there has been some litigation driving those increases and just an overall use of legal services. So we are seeing a need for a larger budget in that area for next year. And then medical within the jail is a big budget driver as well. We've had some bills from two or three years that have shown up for payment this year. So we're kind of needing to catch up on some big expenses that for some reason were not billed in a timely manner. And the sheriff's office has made a concerted effort to reduce those medical expenses by utilizing the insurance marketplace and getting our inmates signed up for some coverage through the Affordable Care Act. So that is a new initiative that we have recently become aware of. They are actively working on implementing that as a cost savings measure. So we do hope that we're going to see some benefit from that. But we are needing to look at enhancing the amount of hours that we have a nurse available on site for care within the jail and looking at some other services related to medical. Security within social services. So that is another budget line that we're seeing a significant increase in in terms of usage in this fiscal year and anticipated need in the coming fiscal year. They do have a security, contract security officer on site daily, which is, we budgeted for that for the last couple of years. But as we've seen more and more foster children staying in our office space, we have been utilizing that contract in order to ensure that we have two adults present. So supplementing staff with a security officer on site overnight while we're housing the foster children. And we know that that is not an ideal situation. That is an unfortunate circumstance that we're dealing with statewide. And then facilities, we're seeing increases in utility costs and maintenance expenses. And then for education funding, we do not yet have a request from Person County Schools. They're working through their budget process as we're working through ours. With Piedmont Community College, we have gotten their request. So they have requested a six percent increase for the coming year when it comes to their operating budget. That's about just over a hundred thousand dollar increase over the current year. So that just gives you an indication of what they're experiencing, what they're seeing in terms of rising costs related to workforce and operating expenses. That's what county funding is going towards in addition to their capital needs. But when it comes to that operational piece, it's a six percent increase that they've requested. All right, any questions about these big ticket items before I move on? Okay. For capital planning, just to give you a glimpse of this, we've gotten a little bit further along in this process because the CIP is scheduled to be presented to the board in April. Our current fiscal year twenty-five capital improvement plan is twenty-eight point seven million dollars. On an annual basis, due to the policy that we've developed in alignment with our financial advisors and our debt model, we have looked at putting three point two million dollars of general funding, pay-as-you-go money, to support the capital improvement program. So if you only look at that funding source, then you're looking at a five-year plan of sixteen million dollars, three point two million dollars each year. So we're needing to supplement that pay-as-you-go funding with other sources. For CIP requests, just for the next fiscal year, the request came in at eighteen point six million dollars. Over the five-year period, the total requests are a hundred and sixty-nine point four million dollars. So compare that to the sixteen million dollars that we would have planned to support through the general fund. Currently, the recommended plan has about fourteen point one million dollars of funding in it. Again, this is subject to change as we continue to evaluate over the coming weeks the request and our funding sources. But as I said earlier, we do use general fund dollars to support the CIP debt proceeds. So we are planning on issuing limited obligation bonds. It's the second round that's planned for the school system. And we anticipate issuing those, I think, in early twenty twenty-six. So in the twenty-six fiscal year, in the early twenty-six calendar year. We do have some funding through the American Rescue Plan Act that has been reserved that we could put towards the CIP. And we are continuously seeking grant funding to fund projects within the CIP. So those would be our funding sources. And just to go into a little more detail about what will, what is being evaluated and is currently in the recommended CIP, and again, this is subject to change. But these are just an example of needs that are out there throughout the county. It's in a variety of different departments. So these are examples of what is being supported through our taxpayer dollars, through our debt service. So library and HVAC system replacement is needed. Within the law enforcement center, which houses the jail and the sheriff's office personnel, we need an HVAC system replacement and retrofit and upgrade of the plumbing in that building. Body cameras, the sheriff's office expects to receive grant funding for this project. Emergency services, so equipping those initial response or supervisor vehicles with climate-controlled places to house the medication in the backs of the vehicles. Ballistic protection and bathroom renovations at the main station. We're looking at a new emergency services building over the long term. So putting some money into design and seeking grant assistance for that. Recreation and parks, we've got ADA accessibility playgrounds, athletic field lights and pickleball courts. And for the recycling center, mattress and tire shredder is something that we've discussed. And that is currently, we're looking at recommending that contingent upon receiving grant funding. For the Person County School System, we've got school improvements. Again, that's the second round of issuing bonds, limited obligation bonds, to cover much-needed safety and security improvements within the schools. And then some other projects, a couple of priorities for them are heat pump replacement and floor tile replacements. And then also budgeting for some contingency to go with the above school improvements. For Piedmont Community College, a couple of their top priority capital needs is an HVAC water pipe insulation project and door locking security upgrades. So that is what makes up the fourteen point one million dollar plan for capital improvements in fiscal year twenty-six. And those are just tentative reservations, recommendations. We're continuing to work through that process. Here's an example of some of the projects that are not currently included in the recommended CIP. Various parks and recreation projects, Helena and Olive School gyms, gym paintings, splash pad, fence repair and replacement. Person County Schools, various projects, heat pump, intercom, floor tile and exterior door replacements, electronic door lock installations. And then for PCC, various projects there with building renovations and parking lot repairs. And then they did request two million dollars for chat renovations. That's currently not in the plan. We're continuing to work with them on seeking grant funding. They have received some additional allocations at the federal level and have some money available from the state as well to begin those renovations. All right, any questions or comments kind of on the preliminary CIP considerations? Any thoughts to inform further discussion between now and when the recommendation is presented for your consideration in April? Okay.
Um, parks and rec projects. And I was looking at what's not recommended and I was looking at the splash pads. So I heard you say you're seeking grants and other avenues for some of the other projects that were not recommended. I don't know if a conversation's been had with Mr. Hill about the same or any other sources of revenue to help support that for the community with, you know, grants or donations from community or community organizations that would move that should the county be presented with a smaller request, a financial request for that particular project.
Okay, and if that, I, I know that we've kind of had this on the table for discussion for several years now. And if the board is supportive of that project, I will say, one of the main reasons for not including it in the next fiscal year, it's still on the plan for future years, really has to do with staff capacity at this time and the other large projects that are currently underway within Parks and Rec. But we could very well find some additional capacity to do this. There is American Rescue Plan funding that's still reserved that could potentially be used towards this project if the board is supportive of moving forward and developing a plan for it. And as you mentioned, there's also the opportunity to seek grant funding for it. Is there any other feedback?
One, one thing going forward on your approach with planning, obviously, each commission's going to give input on what their thoughts ultimately were the ones that are going to be approving the final tax rate. And I'm only speaking for myself, but I would like to see you, as you take your approach on your proposed budget, to us to take a strong line towards a revenue-neutral approach when examining and determining your proposed budget.
Okay. Are there any other thoughts on the splash pad?
I just think, like you said, it's something that is an upfront cost, but it also has to be maintained. You've got to have staffing. And they're already struggling with a number of new projects that have been approved in recent years. With where we are with, you know, if we go revenue-neutral, we're going to basically be doing a cut, is what I understand. So I would stick with what you've recommended and, and continue to push it out, especially if there's no staffing to, if there's an issue with them absorbing all the projects that have already been approved.
I agree.
And I, I didn't explain that fully. So not recommended for fiscal year twenty-six funding. So we do approve CIP funding on an annual basis. So what you will be approving as a board in advance of actually approving the recommended budget is a plan to fund the CIP in the next fiscal year. So we do slot out year two, three, four, and five. We're keeping this on the radar as a project that we would like to do, but don't necessarily include funding in the upcoming fiscal year for it. Any other thoughts? And so this slide does give you a quick overview of new positions that have been requested by departments. Again, we have not delved into these requests yet. But you'll see one for Person Industries, two positions for EMS, a part-time position in soil and water. The sheriff has several new positions, and then there are fourteen from social services. So that is the bulk of the position requests are within social services. You will see that quite a few of those are related to child welfare. There's three, no, five, social worker, three positions for foster care and adoptions. So my understanding is that these requests have been informed by the evaluation that has been conducted by CCR consultants. And again, we will spend some more time at the staff level getting a better understanding of all these requests and determining which needs, we do need to move forward for funding in the next fiscal year. And we'll bring those back to the board. Any questions about that? Okay. I also want to mention, as Tracy said, we are keeping at the staff level a constant eye on our expenditures and our revenues. We are ensuring that we're able to meet the budget. We've established a balanced budget for fiscal year twenty-five. We are keeping a close eye to ensure that we are going to bring in the revenues that are needed to cover the budgeted expenses. If at any point we determine that we are in jeopardy of not being able to do that or that there is a, a bigger problem at hand, then we will take measures to inform the board and to cut back in certain areas if necessary. As of right now, just keeping a close eye on it. We feel like that we're on track within our budget. We have not needed, generally within the budget year, when there are unanticipated expenditures, fund balance appropriations can be used to cover those unexpected expenditures. We are doing everything that we can to keep any fund balance allocations to a minimum in this fiscal year. And we have not had to do that so far. But you may start to see some budget amendments that include some fund balance appropriations as we determine that there are some unexpected expenditures, such as the medical expenses within the jail. May need to be covered with a fund balance appropriation to get us through this fiscal year. But any of that will come forward on your budget amendments for you to approve. And you can always ask questions of staff when you see those recommendations or pull something off the consent agenda for discussion. But we are trying to be very careful and minimize any additional fund balance allocations in this fiscal year. Other things that we're doing are evaluating revenues that are coming in. In some cases, those are lagging. In other cases, there may be increased revenues. In some cases, those are lagging, in other cases, there may be increased revenues that we can recognize and use that to call cover some of the additional expenses that we're seeing, so that's something that we're always working on. In addition, we're monitoring funding at the state and federal level as conditions change. Some grants may longer be available to us or some revenue sources. So we're constantly monitoring any changes that occur at that level of government that may affect our anticipated revenues and the services that we provide, so we'll keep you updated on any red flags that come through the, through those processes as well. So next steps in the budget process, we are going to have departmental budget presentations with the county manager and designated staff. So those will occur between March fourth and March fourteenth. The recommended CIP will be presented to the commissioners, to the, to the board on, at your April seventh meeting with anticipated adoption on April twenty first. So you'll see the recommended plan on the seventh, you'll be able to provide feedback and then we can rework it as necessary and bring it back for your adoption on April twenty first. And again, the funding for that is not actually authorized until you adopt the budget in June, but it indicates what you are anticipating, including in that fiscal year twenty six budget. Then May nineteenth, county manager will present the recommended budget to the board of commissioners. In that May nineteenth budget, we will reference the revenue neutral tax rate. As Russell said, we are required to publish a revenue neutral tax rate. So that will be referenced at that time based on the information that we know at that time, which could still change and evolve in between when the recommendation is made and when the budget is adopted. So we'll continue to work with that number as we have new information available. But you will see an, an estimate of that in the recommended budget and you will see how that relates to the manager's recommendation in terms of the tax rate to support the needs of county government. And we will do everything that we can to minimize that, any uh, tax rate over and above the revenue neutral rate, that's what we're shooting for, that's our starting point. And we'll have an explanation for anything that uh, is above that. But I've heard your feedback and we certainly will have that in mind as we work through the process. And then the public hearing will be held on the recommended budget on June second. So that will be a time for the public to come to that board meeting to provide any comments on the recommended budget, which will include a recommended tax rate. And then June third through the thirteenth is reserved for work sessions at the discretion of the board. We will schedule those on specific dates and at times in the future. And then Ju, and those will be publicly noticed and everyone will know when those are scheduled and they will be open to the public. And then on June sixteenth, we will have the adoption of the fiscal year twenty six budget ordinance. That concludes my preview for the upcoming year, again, we have some information, but not enough to put together a recommended budget yet, so we will continue to work through that process. Any questions or feedback from you all? Sure, you're welcome.
And I know that I'm listed on the agenda, but
Yes.
We're gonna turn that over to Brian for the strategic plan discussion.
Next, we have our strategic plan review, Assistant Manager Brian Hart.
All right, good uh, good morning. All right, so this will be a fairly high level overview of our strategic plan, uh, which was adopted originally on February the twentieth, two thousand twenty four. This was after a series of work sessions and meetings both with this board of commissioners as well as department leadership. The strategic plan does include both vision and mission statements, organizational values and five strategic focus areas with associated goals and strategies which we'll review in just a moment. It is important to note that the goals provide a two to four year view of priorities. Strategic, excuse me, strategies rather, describe specific tasks, outputs and or outcomes intended to be accomplished over the next one to two fiscal years. And as you'll see when we get to that portion of the presentation, most of the strategies are just, are assigned uh, and carried out by specific departments to illustrate and convey ownership. The FY twenty five budget process did incorporate the strategic pla, the strategic plan in that when department leadership were preparing their budget request and their associated narratives, they were asked to identify which of the focus areas their specific objectives related to. And then the first quarterly report of this strategic plan was provided to the board of commissioners on October the twenty first of two thousand and twenty four. And a second quarterly report will be provided to you all, maybe in the spring, it is pending. And what that quarterly report entails is a kind of an update about some of the progress that the different departments are making towards accomplishing those strategies and goals. And last but not least, of course, the plan is a guiding document for elected officials, staff and volunteers. So here's a, I think a very eye catching overview of our vision and mission. And then what we have here listed as community professionalism, transparency, opportunity and stewardship are those values that the board of commissioners have previously adopted and defined as those kind of guiding principles that guide the activities of the organization. So here is one of the, the first strategic focus area, economic opportunity and growth. Uh, and you'll see the four goals that correspond to that focus area. And then just beneath each of the goals, you have kind of the cascading strategies that pertain to them. Uh, you'll note on goal four, which says expand Riley Regional Airport at Person County to facilitate economic opportunity and growth. There's a check mark under four point one, uh, which indicates that that has been completed, the complete, the run rate strengthening project. Additionally, each of these strategies are um, are items or activities that are constantly progressing and that the departments associated or responsible with, for them are always making headway on. Capital investment is the next focus area. Uh, that has the three goals as you see stated there, and then um, just like on the previous slide, the green check mark kind of indicates those that are essentially completed um, and are anticipated to be completed this fiscal year, such as the completion of the PI and MRF construction and, and physical and operation merger before May of twenty twenty five, so that is well underway as previously noted. Lifelong learning, another of the focus areas, has two particular goals, support our educational partners, Person County Schools and Piedmont Community College, and then uh, goal number nine of the overall plan is to work with partners to create and support opportunities for the current and future workforce to learn and develop new, new skills. And so again, these are goals, while you don't see check marks, these uh, these strategies are things that are continuously being worked on in advance by the departments, such as nine point one, which says offer educational based programs for all ages and expand outreach through partnerships and community, community organization, something that our library and our parking rec system, among others, are always working towards. Service excellence is the fourth of the strategic focus areas. And you see the four corresponding goals. Under goal number twelve, there are two green check marks, which again indicates that those have been advanced or completed. Uh, goal number twelve specifically states to enhance transparency and communication. And twelve point one pertains to the public records request policy and the online public records request platform, which was implemented late last calendar year. And then we have the upcoming Citizens Academy, which we've begun, begun recruiting for. So those are two things that are well underway, and again, these other strategies are also being advanced in a number of different ways. And then lastly, was quality of life or is quality of life, which has the corresponding goals to enhance public safety and community well-being, promote healthy communities and preserve and celebrate the rural character and lifestyle of the county and community. And so when the, when the second quarter update is provided, you'll get more of an in-depth review of the different strategies and whether departments stand with each of those, uh, with accomplishing each of those goals. Are there any questions?
The service excellent, I ran into a couple of people who were interested in the Citizens Academy and you would have thought they won a million dollars and they received their, um, they were excited that they were accepted into the program. And they're looking forward to it, so I just thought I would let you all know that um, the folk I've run into who had received their letter, they're like really excited about like changing their plans and everything just to make sure that they're present so that they can participate.
Our public information officer, Kim Strickland, has been really instrumental in guiding that process, so we're grateful for her work in that regard. And glad that it's been well received.
Yes.
Awesome.
With some changes I'd like to talk about, if this is the time that we're ready for that.
Sure, which slide?
If we go back to the main, to the beginning, the vision and mission slide. I think the vision is good. Uh, as for the mission, the, at the end where it says facilitating economic growth, to me, I think that word was used with the Microsoft transaction, I think that's an accurate description probably of what happened with that. But I think as far as our overall economic development efforts, we need a stronger focus there. Maybe catalyzing economic growth, we have an economic catalyst fund, so I think that should be our goal. And then with community, I think there's a lot of words in there that are just too subjective for us to say if we've hit the target or not for, or for people to know what they mean. And I'd like to suggest that we condense it to things that are more concise and clear. We are family friendly, celebrate our agricultural and industrial heritage and prioritize public safety and a strong quality of life. And then with the transparency, the yellow block, the last sentence communication is a priority. I think that's also subjective, we don't know when we've hit that target. So I would suggest replacing that with adhering to open government statutes and policies is a priority. And the same thing for opportunity, we work to catalyze economic growth.
Could you send me that recommended wording and then when we present the quarterly update next month, we can also revisit that as well.
Okay. Um, and then on the economic opportunity and growth section, I'd like to see us consider adding one point four to diligently promote the county's assets locally, regionally, nationally, through online and social and print media platforms and in-person marketing and recruitment. And then under goal two, for section two point two, to evaluate capacity and needs for water and sewer supply for current and future city and county needs. So we have, you know, the mega site is sold to Microsoft, we don't know what their plans are, but if it's data centers, they use a lot of water. So we don't know where that leaves us with our supply. We have an aging system in the city, we don't, I think we should do a needs assessment because whatever the city can produce is what we can have in the county. So I think we also need to make sure we update our agreement with the city. The city and county agreement on the funds that come to the county when infrastructure is extended in the county with the county's support. And then to add to that about infrastructure, to evaluate transportation and rail capacity and needs for current and future growth. Also something we should consider under our infrastructure. And then on the capital investment, uh, I think this can be a future need, but it's something we definitely need to start thinking about and have on our radar, similar to what the schools did with their facility assessment, the county facilities are also aging. We only have so much land with infrastructure. So I think in the future, we may be competing for where we're going to be able to have our government offices, where we're going to be able to have our schools, where we're going to be able to have our new commercial and industrial growth. So I think we should consider doing a facility needs assessment for county facilities in, within the next, you know, whatever, two to four years or whatever we're looking at. And then on the service excellence, under goal twelve, I think we should just eliminate, conduct a community survey.
That'd be twelve point two.
Yes. And then I think for thirteen point three, it says hire a grant writer. Just a minor tweak there that the county has already contracted with the grant writer, which seems like a good, good relationship, you can call on them when you need them. Because I think the, it was put out for hire and there weren't, we weren't able to find anybody. So those were all the ones I had.
Well, again, if you'll send that language as County Manager Kathy requested to her, and it can be reviewed and updated as needed. Any other questions or concerns? Thank you.
Next item, we have CD dash zero one two four, request by the applicant and property owner Duke Energy Progress LLC for conditional district rezoning approval on a two hundred ninety seven acre vacant lot beside seventeen hundred Dunaway Road, tax map A fifteen three oh four, from R residential to CD GI, conditional district general industrial, county manager.
This item was tabled from your previous meeting, just as a reminder, the board did hold a public hearing at your February third meeting and received public comment on this conditional district rezoning. And this is now
Coming back to you today for a decision. This is, this falls within the category as a, of a legislative decision, as the county attorney reviewed previously. This item was presented to the planning board at their January meeting, the planning board also conducted a public hearing which was noticed, there was no one there to speak at that public hearing. So it has gone through the process of the planning board, which made a recommendation to the commissioners and it is now before you today for a decision.
You've heard the county manager, what does he desire the board?
I'd like to say something on, Duke Energy has been feeding this county and its families since nineteen sixty six. It's essential that we keep this project going. It's not a coincidence that Microsoft bought the mega site, which is between two power plants. I recently found out that the Boynton Bajewick Microsoft plant, they pull over five hundred
Megawatts of energy. For instance, for example, rather, Mayo itself only pulls seven hundred megawatts, just to show you how much power that Microsoft is going to take, so it's not a coincidence that they, that they purchased our mega site between two power plants. So we're, you know, we want the jobs to come, we need to keep this project going. Last year alone, Duke Energy paid, paid over seven point five million dollars to this county in taxes, seven point five million. It's essential that we keep this going and we keep Duke Energy in Person County, so I make the motion that we move forward with this.
We have a motion, Commissioner, discussion.
I would also like to bring up a few points and like Commissioner Thomas stated, we know that Duke Energy provides a lot to this community. I enjoy seeing the pictures and everything and we've actually been in common places where they have given to this community and provided certain things to certain communities, should they not have been involved, it may not have happened. On the other side of that, I do, you all may remember, I posed some questions to Duke Energy at our last meeting. And you know, I did And, you know, I did meet, uh, to get those questions answered. And there are some things that they are, uh, willing to look into because they felt they were valid questions that I had asked. Um, the only thing I want to say about today, um, is that I know we tabled it on February third, we did have a pub- public comment section, session on that. However, we tabled it because we had, um, again, constituents who could not access the information to be able to read up on it. And there may have been miscommunication because some did and, um, but now they're not allowed to speak on the information that they had. But I know we have our process in place and our agenda in place and how work sessions, um, go. But I did want to mention that we did, you know, table it so that our constituents would be able to um, gather more information about this project. But, you know, now that they have, I know that, you know, there is concern that we have this information, but now we can't speak on it. Um, so I just wanted to make that, um, clear and that, you know, it's noted. But I did meet with, to have some additional questions answered, um, that could not be answered on that day regarding the concerns I had with the project and things I had observed on my own.
Thank you. Commissioner Wilburn.
Yeah, I would say, um, this is a rezoning. This is not a support of the project or not of the project. That happened in my mind a long time ago when, um, the county approved hiring a lobbyist to pursue having this investment stay and grow in Person County for all the reasons that Commissioner Thomas mentioned, um, and others. And also worked with a P R firm to put out a supportive message in the community. And that included a message from our former Republican chairman of this board and our current state representative Democrat of, you know, still representing us. Um, and in my mind, this should be an administrative rezoning. The power plant was there before zoning took place in the county. Um, I think the wrong zoning was overlaid there and when that was made residential. And so this should be something that we were bringing forward as the county and Duke didn't have to. But we are where we are with it now. Um, the conditional rezoning allows it to be tied to them making that investment. Um, they, the property that's zone residential can only be accessed through the service road. So I don't think Duke is going to get into residential development. And I don't think they're going to sell it for residential development when, um, it would pose a security issue for their plant out there from access. So, um, there was mention of the Boynton data center projects and how the power supply is necessary for those data centers. But that also brings in a ton of tax base. And that county in Virginia has a lot of new schools as a result of those data centers being there. So, um, this is a project that is not only, uh, bringing in the tax base from Duke, but future potential major capital, um, tax revenue. So.
Could I ask the, uh, county attorney to just please read over the proposed, uh, motion?
That should be it.
Sir, just give me one moment to pull it up. All right, so this is from the staff report and, um,
So it's, it's on the second page of the agenda abstract.
I was just pulling it up. I was looking at a different item. All right, thank you, Madam Manager. Okay, so the motion that was before the, um, this is before the planning board.
It's on page seventy-nine. I added in, it had missed the reference to conditional district rezoning
There it is.
On the report.
Thank you. Yeah, it's very plainly legible and, um, in the agenda, which is probably why I missed it. So thank you, Madam Manager. All right, so the motion is, um, I hereby move to approve conditional zone, uh, district rezoning application C D dash zero one dash two four for the Duke Energy Progress LLC site to rezone the two hundred and ninety-seven acre vacant subject property from a R parentheses residential to a C D dash G I, which is conditional district general industrial zoning designation and find it is consistent with the adopted Person County and City of Roxborough joint comprehensive land use plan.
And this was approved by our, um, planning department four to two? Is that correct?
The, the planning board recommended it four to two.
Thank you.
So the chair will recognize that, uh, Commissioner Thomas is reflecting the statement made by the attorney as his motion?
Correct.
All right, again, we have that motion on the floor. Any further discussion? If not, all in favor of the motion as read, say aye. Aye. Those opposed? Motion pass three to one. Thank you. Item number eight, E D C resolution, membership amendment, county manager.
At its January meeting, the Economic Development Commission, uh, voted to recommend to the board a membership change within the E D C. And Commissioner Wilburn may have some additional information to add. But basically what the E D C is requesting the board do is there is currently a vacant seat on the E D C. And then there is an ex officio seat designated for farmland preservation. It is a non-voting seat. So the request is to make the vacant seat the designated ex officio for farmland preservation seat. And for that to be filled by the current occupant of that seat who is Claudia Berryhill. We do need to formalize this as a resolution. I apologize. I did not bring that to put at your places today as I had indicated I would. So if the board indicates your support of this change, then I will add a resolution to your, uh, first meeting in March for you to ratify it. Would you like to add?
Yeah, I'll just go back to the strategic plan that we just reviewed and goal sixteen says preserve and celebrate rural character and lifestyle. Implement conservation programs which would include farmland preservation and promote agribusiness and agritourism. And that's what that seat was designed to do. So, um, this, you know, gives more focus to that goal by making this a voting position on the Economic Development Commission.
If I may, Mr. Chairman.
Yes, sir.
Um, I just, uh, the, the county manager had asked me about this before and I suggested there just be a, a verbal vote for or against. And that way, even though it does need a written resolution at the next meeting, the E D C can, you know, get on with its business if the board chooses to change its structure.
I'll, I'll make a motion to approve.
Motion to approve? Any further discussion? If not, all in favor, vote for saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? The ayes have it, motion's approved. At this time, we have, uh, closing remarks. I appreciate everyone's time. I appreciate staff's time and all the hard work that goes into these retreats and preparation. Um, I know in the past we have done surveys before. Are we planning on sending out a survey to the board members to get feedback?
Yes, I'll send a link to you all for your feedback.
Okay. All right, at this time, does any board members have any comments?
I would like to, um, point out at our next meeting in March, um, uh, Commissioner Royster will be representing us at N A C O in Washington, D.C. And, uh, and, um, hope she obtains a lot of knowledge and, uh, but, um, uh, she will not be present at the next meeting. So I'm just, um, pointing that, um, pointing that out ahead of time on that. But, um, represent Person County well.
Do my best.
All right, any other comments from commissioners? All right, having here none, do I have a motion to adjourn? All right, we have a motion to adjourn. Any further discussion? All in favor, vote for saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Ayes have it. We adjourned.